They they have.
Okay. Oh, this is. If you would please draw us a letter of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united in this one with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, this is our first study session of the season. Our first order of business is to listen to a present, excuse me, a presentation about the Litchfield Square Bond, Mr. Matthews. That's Billy Williams, I'm sorry. Matthews.
Not Billy, it was Matthews.
Thank you, sir. I like some of the other one, I certainly will call for us. Good evening, everyone, good to see everybody. Mayor Council, we have a full house tonight, because tonight is our budget meeting, so we have most of our staff here for questions as we go through. But before we get into that, we're going to talk about the Litchfield Square Bond. You will remember, Mayor Council, that we did a bond for fifteen million dollars in summer of two thousand twenty-one, and now, of course, we're talking about another bond type thing. So when we first got into the Litchfield Square, of course, we were talking about a twenty-six million dollar project. At that time, again, we did a fifteen million dollar bond, with the balance, some of what we're going to pay in savings, some of what we're going to pay through sponsorships, that sort of thing. That being said, as we all know, there's been a lot of inflation since two thousand twenty-one. There's also been things that have added to the project as we've been along. Examples of that would be the RPG lighting in some downtown area. We add RPG lighting to be in Litchfield Square and also to be in the downtown part so that would match, that would seemingly all be together. Things like that are great, but of course, they also cost more. So that's part of this. Councilor Rowman, can you, can you hear us, sir? Councilor Rowman, can you hear me? If you would unmute yourself, sir? You're still muted, sir.
Maybe it's not that we can hear us.
Okay. Say, we can, I think you can hear me, sir, but we can't hear you, you're still muted. I also make sure you can hear us.
All right, I think I'm muted, yeah.
You are, sir, thank you, good to see you. So, that brings us to the discussion of the Litchfield Square Bond. So, it's basic numbers here, so again, forty million dollar total construction estimate. GMP one through GMP four is sixteen point eight million dollars, that's already been approved. GMP five, that you will hear later tonight, is nine point two million. GMP six is projected at fourteen million. There's also two million dollars in design engineering. That's actually more than that, that's actually two, two point nine. That's on the agenda for later, we'll get more into that later. Some of the projects, tell me how that broke out, again, fifteen million dollar bond, one point six million dollar city contribution. Just a reminder, and the reason we did it that way is you can't use bond money for private utilities, because the city doesn't have utilities, we have to build these, turn them over, but you can't use bond money for that. So we paid for that in our city cash. Another one point five million dollar city contribution for portion of GMP four. That leaves us with a balance of twenty-three point nine million dollars to put the project. Twenty million dollar bond recommended, with three point nine million of city cash reserves.
If I be helpful, if you took the, we have a drawing from the back of the night.
Yes, sir.
It shows the different stages of what's complete, what's got to be done. Right, can you bring that up on order, so that we make sure that we understand what we're talking about?
Sure. Mayor, can you do that? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, he said, sure, we can do that.
I, I think. Where was the second?
Where?
My school.
Oh, we got time, okay.
It's, well, there are three, three or four colors on it. There you go.
So I don't know how well we can read that, but you see in the green, the green says complete or nearly complete. Pink is GMP five, again, we'll discuss that later tonight. And blue is future GMPs. So that kind of breaks it up, and what we've done so far. Of course, as you see the green, you see the roundabout, you would see most of Village Parkway, you see the northern street up near the micros parcel. Again, with the pink being GMP five, GMP five includes most of the streets around the future park area, it includes the completion of Village Parkway all the way over to Old Litchfield Road, the south half of the park, and also the complete rebuild of Honeysuckle. That was another part that caused, we didn't know Honeysuckle was that bad. Honeysuckle isn't even a matter of mill and overlay, it's actually got to go down to the dirt. So if Mayor Council approve this tonight, we'll be looking to rebuild that section of Honeysuckle, basically a new road to start. But again, that's GMP five. So that breaks you up in some of those areas. Again, GMP five is over nine million dollars by itself.
The, the reason that I'm going to be helpful, look at this picture, gives you an idea of what would, what the state of the downtown development would be, if we don't do something to, to finish at least all of GMP five, and all of, you know, all of most of six, it's going to make it very difficult for us to, to, uh, get developers interested in, you said, hurt it's got to.
I would agree exactly what the mayor said, at some point, that's the question. You have to ask yourself, as far as the project goes, do we want to keep going as it is, do we want to slow the project down? We've already divided up into more phases. That being said, we would recommend moving ahead with GMPs and keep, keep moving ahead with the construction as it is at the current pace, and keep it going. It's much more attractive that to finish project than it is half complete, and that's kind of where we are at this point.
So, thanks for observing that. Any questions, Senator?
Could you go back? One second. If you pull the public works slide, one, one more. Thank you. Sorry. As we're discussing the bond tonight, you will see the bond that we're looking at is actually for twenty-three million, not twenty. Just to be clear about that, twenty million is for Litchfield Square, to finish out the infrastructure of Litchfield Square. When I say finish out, that does not include the amphitheater, and it does not include the clock tower, but it includes those, the roads, and includes putting the parking grass, putting the restrooms in, all those things. It doesn't leave, it doesn't include what I would call extras, again, like an amphitheater, because you could always put that in later, but.
How much water do you want?
The water features included in the twenty, sir. So this would get all the, it would get all the streets done, Litchfield Square, the landscaping, the park done, again, it wouldn't get the amphitheater done. Okay. But Litchfield Square, again, is twenty million, the remaining three million of the twenty-three is a public works facility. You may remember, we talked about this before, our current public works facility leaves something to be desired, just to be honest. It's currently consisting of two old fire buildings that Royal Metro Fire used to use, and also a, a mobile home that the public works guys use. It's not in best condition, I don't want to get into it much more than that, but we could certainly even need a, a modern public works facility, a shop for the equipment to be in, a better, just better office for the employees as well. Currently, a lot of our public works employees, they're, they're using porta johns in the summer, it's hot. We need, we need a public works facility, and that's where the three million comes in. Again, that building would house a public works shop and offices for community development staff too, we don't, it makes sense to have public works together with new development, because those staff work hand in hand. Again, that would be a three million dollar piece for that, for a total of twenty-three.
We, we just recently went through a review of a building that we have, the city, the city had designed for, to replace Scott Lodge, and I think it was pretty clear the council was not okay with that building because of the excessive cost of it.
Yes, sir.
So the question is, how, this, when you say three million dollars, is that, how realistic is that for what you're going to rebath?
I would say we, we've had a lot of discussions about this, we've, staff feels that's a pretty realistic number, three million for, for design and build. That would be, is at the side of the current public works building, sir. Mr. Vice Mayor, you have a question on that, sir?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Trying to get the speaker, but what, what are you intending to build over there? Is it more than just offices and bathrooms, or are you building working facilities?
Yes, sir.
Shed for shade, or what, what are you building?
Basically, it's sort of a shop building back there, equipment could go in and be indoors, they could work on equipment inside, with office space in the front. We want to blend in the community, of course, and look in the neighborhood, but it's going to be in as well, of course.
And how many square feet are we talking about in office?
So that one, I'm going to refer Keith.
Probably between four thousand for the office.
What's the, what's the total building square footage?
The building square footage is four thousand, but that's the house, twenty-three public works employees plus community development services.
And also, what?
And how many is the shop itself?
We haven't got that yet. That's probably between three and four thousand square foot.
Is that another building, or what is it?
It'd be like a bumber, pretty bad building.
So you effectively have a shop building, so with office space on the front of the shop building, if that makes sense?
Yes. Looking at maybe eight hundred dollars a square foot for those numbers? Seven hundred dollars a square foot?
That estimate includes all the site work as well, the demo of existing, there's uh, discussed as removal, there's uh, utility extensions, all the, the entire set.
Still puts the same cost, seven hundred bucks a foot?
No, sorry, four hundred, okay. Was he telling us, for the.
The public building's gonna give you a thousand, that's not gonna do it.
And this is the finished building, four. Seventy thousand is pretty total for the project. But you mean that we could build a whole desk?
Yeah, for sure. Yeah, public building won't be that expensive compared to the office building.
I think the office is going to be, the office is going to be inside the bummer, so it's the same thing. It'd be approximately where the existing firehouse is centered, is that, is that two buildings? It, it, the, the shop will be in the back, and the offices will be towards the front with them separated by uh, parking, we haven't got as far as an actual site. We have two separate buildings.
The offices would be on the front of the shop, sir, if you basically have the rectangular shop with office buildings in the front of the building, so it looks more like an office building, but within the neighborhood. And I would almost call it a, like a historical facade, if that makes sense.
Which, which could still be a bummer type building, it's a steel building.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Because it's much expensive to, to do two of those, which would cost.
Yes, sir.
The other question would be, we added two buildings up back to City Hall, back there, and we leased those for, what, twenty thousand a year or something? Would that be something to do on a temporary basis for five or ten years, to avoid maybe two million of this?
So, the, the one, while we're talking about it, is currently leased now, it is about twenty thousand a year, that's correct, we actually just added some time of that lease because it was coming up, we could certainly do that. That works for office space, but it doesn't give you any shop space, of course.
Yeah, and that would be another building up back there. I mean, if, if, it would appear to be, we should be able to cut that down to a million dollars if we're thinking about trying to lease or purchase modular buildings to put in there, and putting in that steel building.
Uh, modular would definitely make it much cheaper. Now, I don't know as far as, as far as adding modular to the, to shop, but I don't, I don't know if that they're trying to answer that.
This one, this one beyond what we're trying to do tonight.
Yeah, exactly, but I just had the same return to mayor voice, I don't want to get into a scuffle.
Okay, somebody that comes to me right now, I can't talk.
You're talking real good, John.
What's your name, sir?
We can hear you well, Councilor Rowman.
You may do so.
Okay. The, uh, I, I don't want to get in a situation where we thought we were building something that was in the hundreds and hundreds of thousands, and went into the million plus range, like when Scout cut, we built something that was, or designed something that was.
Big, big, big one. Yes, sir.
All right.
Okay. Next slide, please. So, uh, we've been looking at bond options for a while, I'm actually going to turn this over page.
Thank you, Matthew. Um, Mayor and Council, I've been working with, um, Mark Frieda with Stiefel, our bond underwriter, and asked him to provide a couple different estimates for us. Um, one, a twenty million dollar bond, and then a twenty-three million dollar bond for ten, twenty, thirty year terms. Um, as you can see, if we just did the twenty million, the average payment over thirty years would be about one point two, and then if we did the twenty-three, the average payment is about one point four. Um, for this presentation tonight, all of the budgeted numbers include this one point four million dollars. So I put together a few different, um, financial scenarios, um, that you all could see.
I'm sorry, Paige, that one point four million, you gotta wait before I can look at that, what's, what term is that over?
Thirty.
Thirty year?
Yeah, thirty year term at four point two four percent, which that was at the time of this estimate, so it would.
Yeah, the interest rate is lower for ten years, and we're trying to sell a bunch of this property. So, okay. Hopefully, we're not taking ten years to sell, but, okay, thank you.
I put together a few different scenarios so you, uh, so everybody could see how a one point four million dollar debt payment would, um, impact us. Um, the first one, I would consider, um, best case, and the budget presentation you'll see later is actually built on, on this scenario. But this includes stable revenues, um, I kept the city sales tax flat at ten million dollars. Um, I pushed out any parcel sales until fiscal year twenty-five, I put four million in twenty-five and twenty-six. And the one point four million dollar bond payment would start, um, the first payment would be due in January of twenty-four. And this includes, um, Litchfield Square GMP five that will be presented later at nine point two million, um, I've assumed that that will be paid forward with monoprocess, same thing with the public works facility. Um, all of the city CIP projects that will go through later, uh, total seven point nine million. And, um, the fifteen million dollar infrastructure sale to Litchfield Square, I just want to point that out, it's likely that wouldn't happen in fiscal year twenty-seven, but just to keep on everybody's radar, that at some point, when it's fully built out, um, the city will recoup that fifteen million when the CIP purchases the infrastructure. Um, the estimated, uh, fiscal year twenty-four beginning fund balance is twenty-three point three million, and then estimated at the end of the year, based on this scenario, would be twenty point two million. But of course, all of that's dependent upon our actual revenues and expenses, and what, um, CIP projects we actually complete.
Question? Right there?
Yes.
Back, back to your ten year, twenty year, thirty year deal, if we're looking at a fifteen million dollar buyback, come back to the site you're on, um, if we're looking at a fifteen million dollar buyback from CFD, isn't that money going to go to pay for those bonds?
It could go towards paying the existing bond that we have, the fifteen million that we did, uh, in twenty twenty-one. Um, it could go towards, because we'll have paid some of the principal, not a lot, but we'll have paid some of the principal down by then, but it's mostly interest only for the first five years. Uh, but it could go towards paying down this debt.
The later bonds are going to have a higher interest rate, I presume?
Yes.
So if we're going to choose between paying the earlier ones to the later ones, that fifteen million would go toward the higher interest rate ones, I would think. And if we're going to do that sometime in the next, you say maybe four years, but let's say it's ten years, are we not better off going with a bond, ten year bond with the interest rate maybe being sixty percent of what the thirty year rate was?
I could definitely, um, plug those numbers in, the, the payment will be, um, you know, around three million, which could be, could be tight, um, we would, we might have to look and dip into reserve to cover that.
Okay.
And I apologize, this is probably really hard to see, um, on the screen, but we do have paper copies, um, printed available on the desk. Um, I think what everybody would like to see is, particularly, is the bottom line and what this does to the bottom line. So estimated next year, or this year, I'm estimating at twenty-three point three million. Um, next year, I'm at about twenty point three million, again, that's if we completed every CIP project on the list, and twenty-five estimated is twenty-three. And this, I should point out, um, this does include construction sales tax at, at one point five million, uh, we recover, or we collect construction sales tax on our own project, so as that continues to, um, construction continues, we, we actually collect construction sales tax on our own project. Any questions on this? So our, our middle of the case scenario, I would consider, um, a recession, I put that our revenues are declining four and a half percent next fiscal year, then another, a drop of another five percent for the next two years, and then I have it picking back up again in twenty-seven at five percent. Um, I've really dropped the parcel sales, I dropped it to two point five million occurring in twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. This includes all of the same, um, expenses except for city CIP. I delayed those, if our revenues were really declining that much, it's likely we would recommend, um, putting CIP projects on hold. So our beginning fund balance of twenty-three point three million, at the end of twenty-four would actually be slightly higher, and that's because we would put off any CIP projects. Next slide, please. As you can see at the very top, the operating surplus, that's our revenues over expenses. This year, I'm projecting our revenues over expenses will be just over four million. Um, next year, without big revenue decline, it would be just over seven hundred thousand. And then the next three years, we would have a deficit that would have to be, um, covered with reserves for our one-time revenues. Again, that's with our revenues, um, seeing that big drop. Our ending fund balance, though, down at the bottom, is anywhere between twenty-three, the low point is twenty-one point eight million at fiscal year twenty-five. So really, the, the thing that we could do to mitigate, um, any big drop in the, um, revenues is to put those big CIP projects on hold. So then, the worst case scenario, um, I've dropped revenues even more, seven percent in twenty-four, nine percent in twenty-five, another seven percent, and then picking back up in twenty-seven at seven percent. Um, I'm assuming no parcels will sell, we still have that one point, one point four million dollar debt payment, we continue with Litchfield Square and the public works facility, um, delay the CIP projects. In this really bad scenario, we would need to use city savings to cover operations in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, and by then, our, our ending fund balance in twenty-seven will be just under twelve million. However, if that really happened, if revenues really declined that much, we would, um, bring in recommendations to, um, reduce operating costs before we would, um, try to dip into reserves that high.
Do your numbers have built into them any decreases in operating costs, or you're just presuming everything continues on?
Presuming everything continues on, it's actually built in, um, small operating increases.
Increases, yes. The mayor and I and Councilor Rowman, we're sitting here during a quick recession and a great depression, we, where that was, and, uh, we were able to cut expenses without really cutting services much, we did a little bit, I mean, but I mean.
Can I share a second?
Yeah, yeah, but, but there are, there's a lot of ways our, our expenses can be cut down without affecting police and fire and essential stuff.
Yeah, definitely, that happened, we were.
We have, we have larger, more, uh, council, we can fire the police now.
Yes.
It never happened before, so we still have flexibility in our operating expenses and projecting thirteen million dollars for twenty-four, and basically staying at thirteen million dollars for twenty-five, so, or maybe half of that, that is really subject to, to struggling, frankly, getting some savings done, so, it, it certainly helps, but it's time, but, the thing that's critical is you look at the bond at the bottom line, uh, twenty-six, twenty-seven, either way, and if we are making our bond payments go from late four to three million, we're pretty well running out of circles, or if you're like twenty-seven, you can couple the, the assigned fund balance circles, you're not fighting about, so that would be a lot in the future. Even if we're, even if we did a whole lot of change up here, it's still difficult to make change in reserves every month.
We have over twenty million in unrestricted, unrestricted funds?
We have eighteen, eighteen million unassigned, unbalanced reserves, so, we have reserves in addition to that, that could be, not, like, policy, not a lot of spending, so our actual reserve that we can spend is about eighteen million dollars, projected to twenty-three.
Those reserves, and we set up a few years ago, those numbers, were designed to get us through a massive problem with the impound, you know, so we could get through there, designed to always be there no matter what, but it was that backup, just in case.
Correct.
We took, we were projecting surplus this year, next year, if we took ten million of those reserves and applied it, and cut that bond down, does that make any sense, considering that we could always go out, we have to, not only the interest rate, but we've gotten trouble somewhere.
We can take a look, sir, I could have done this, uh, potentially, we would do a swap on at a time when the interest rates get, where it would be, even higher, but it'd be very expensive.
And I think the interest rates that you're looking at, Paige, for the thirty were, were a little bit less than what we're getting, uh, pool, correct? So we have actually the arbitrage on, on bonds positively requiring.
And what are we, what are we getting in the pool now? About four percent?
I think it's about four, I, I would have to look to get it said.
It's almost, it's almost a straight trade? Yeah. Except a couple of thousand bonds, that's just wrong.
It has come down from the first pool I requested from him last month, it's, it dropped about a quarter of a percent, which decreased to payment a hundred thousand, so they have been coming down slightly. Next slide, please. Hand it back over to Maggie.
Thank you, Paige. Mayor and Council, that brings us to your staff recommendation. Again, we're looking at issuing a twenty-three million dollar bond to complete Litchfield Square, construct a new public works facility. As the Vice Mayor said, we could certainly look at financing that over ten years versus thirty, that's something the council would want to do. We could also certainly bond for less, it's been more in savings, if that's what council would like to do, there's a lot of options here. That being said, we are looking for council staff direction on this bond type, is something you want to do? If it's a path we're about to pursue, we're not asking for a vote on it, but we will need to pursue the documents and bring it back to council in May for an actual vote on the bond, again, if that's something you want to do. Based off the thirty year projection, it would be, you know, roughly a one point four million dollar payment, again, that might be less, could be more depending on the interest that day. That being said, our bond agent, they can adjust on what days they're going to sell the bond. For example, if we could have sold it last week, it would have been one of the mid threes. But of course, we don't know, that's, I think, you know that. Again, currently looking at four point two, estimate our interest cost, first payment would be due January the first, twenty twenty-four, and the first two years, we interest only payments. Certainly, those things are possible, if that's something that shows what I can do. Any questions on that, before we get into draft budget, any questions on the bond? Yes, sir?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Who's your name? Thank you, Mayor. I'm still struggling with that three million dollars for the public works facility. It's a bond, it's a twenty million dollar bond, and we paid cash for the public works facility, and you sharpened your pencil, uh, and got away from the ten percent design and engineering fees that we normally pay, because the Butler Building will be engineered and designed by them, uh, as part of their, their process, it probably have a lower rate within-house designing team. There might be a way to get public works immediately everything that they need, and to get it in something that is a little more palatable for us to pay. and to get it in something that is a little more palatable for us to pay cash now. It's kind of, kind of what I'm thinking of. Contacted a couple of lunch around and figure out what size and need, get the designs. So this, the idea is that I look at the costs, look at maybe what, I don't know, maybe it is a modular or some sort that's large that can go in there immediately, somehow that'd be attractive for that community. Uh, I don't want that community to look at anything that's remotely like what I'm looking at right now. It's, uh, it's gotta be something nice, but maybe there needs to be a block fence built around the front to enclose the entire facility. I mean, I don't know. That, that would be a little more palatable to me, you know, we've got the cash. I don't know why we need twenty million bank. We can, we can move, maybe starting immediately trying to get the information together with the public groups, building room.
We, we could certainly do it the way, sir. We could certainly, uh, we could certainly bond for less and spend more on savings. It's all good that, how my council will do that.
I think what, what you need now is a, is a sense of counsel, so it's not going to take any connection.
Correct.
So I, I think the sense of counsel is that we, we are willing to look at using a bond, but it would be nice to have some more scenarios. So we see if we only went with a twenty million dollar bond, assuming that, assuming we spent, we're sort of assuming we're going to spend three million dollars on this, oh, first facility, but assume that we're going to pay cash for it, what does that do to all these scenarios? And what does it do if you go, go on? Couple of different steps, so thirty years was an empty, we're playing. Let's just see what it does to these ending plan balances with these assumptions we learned about that. I think you'll, in some cases, you'll be fine. In other cases, in this worst-case scenario, the reserve at the end of that very time, you know, is probably going to be skinny. Can't tell until we see it. So you can, you can get started on working on that, bringing us back to the actual proposal for a lot. But let's schedule a worst night, go through these numbers, do some more detailing. So an understanding of what we choose in between.
Yes, sir. Certainly that.
Do these numbers show the interest that we're receiving on the money at the moment?
It's part of your, it's part of your operating revenues. I hope, I hope that you see the, in these operating revenues, we're assuming that we've got basically the situation we have today as these bonds are, we can't just pull these bonds down, you know, they stay unexpended, right?
The bonds, yes, they're.
So they don't add, they don't add to our free cash.
Other questions on the bond?
Council Roback, give me questions.
No, not right now. I had a nice meeting with Paige the other day, and I appreciate all your input.
All right, then we'll move on. Do you have a speaking on this, correct?
Yes, sir. Ready for us to begin the draft budget discussion, sir?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is the preliminary budget. Mayor and council, this is a little different than we have in the past on tonight. Um, Paige and I are going to go through the draft budget. We do have some of our various staff members here that can answer this department's specific questions, but we are going to go over the, those departments. If you have questions, specific ones, we can call the opponent, okay? Again, of course, we're looking at the draft budget for our two thousand twenty four, twenty five draft budget. For FY twenty twenty three projections, beginning fund balance nineteen point two million. Revenues over expenditures, four point two million for a net of twenty three point four million. One-time revenues of fourteen million dollars, one-time capital expenditures of fourteen million dollars, with an estimated ending fund balance of twenty three point four.
Just so that everybody's clear, up at twenty three point four. It looks like about, uh, roughly, by a little over five million dollars restricted, restricted funds that require policies we should not be spending. So there's twenty three million, maybe twenty three million there, but there's only eighteen million that would be available for spending on these CIP projects. And maybe that will be discussed.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yes, sir. And now I'm back to Paige for revenue expenditures.
Um, me and council, our, our revenue projections, um, I'd like to start with, um, just this year's projected ending. Um, and projecting our city sales tax will hit right at ten million dollars. Um, I am, I'm projecting our investment earnings will hit about five hundred thousand. With everything combined, we'll, we'll be at about fourteen point four million this year. Um, for our next year's budget, um, I, I programmed in ten million, kept revenues flat. We've seen, um, pretty significant year-over-year increases. With this high inflation and higher costs, we do actually collect more sales tax, but I wanted to start out keeping it, um, revenues flat at ten million. Um, the big jump in revenues that you see, how we go from fourteen point four to five, fifteen point one, is the urban revenue sharing or income tax is going from one point three to over one point eight. And the, the state provides these estimates for us, and income tax is on a two-year lag. So even though the state has reduced income tax, um, we're going to see it increase quite a bit next year, but then you'll see it start to, um, decrease in twenty five, twenty six, and twenty seven. All the other revenues are, are pretty consistent with this year, um, leaving us a total revenue estimate for next fiscal year of fifteen million one fifty nine.
Well, there, there was a change. When the income tax was lower at the state, there was a change in the, the formula that you use to calculate state shared revenue. Does that change already in here?
Yes, that's in the state shared sales tax. And you can see it's pretty conservative. We've got one point one, or just a, not one point one, but one million ten, and then at one million forty five. We still don't really know, like the league helps us with these estimates, we still don't really know how that's going to impact it. So long answer to your question, I think it's included very conservatively.
It was, if, you know, if you could look at twenty five, or from twenty four to twenty five, the income tax portion goes down by two hundred sixty thousand. This change in revenue sharing formula for sales tax was intended to replace that. So the intent was that we would pick up two hundred sixty thousand in the sales tax portion of the, of the calculation. But then, then the thought was after the numbers were finalized, that the number that they agreed to was actually larger than what we need, was needed to have, to just replace all of our. So we shouldn't be actually seeing a little bit more of it. You're not, you're just not, you're not seeing that from the league, or from their numbers?
Not yet. The, the state shared sales tax estimate that they provided us is about one million forty five. They haven't gone out further than that.
So they're not, they're not giving us projections in twenty six?
Not yet.
Ten million forty five is the league?
Yes. Yeah, those three state shared revenue numbers are. Next slide, and I'll search any more questions. Our projected expenses, um, I'd like to start with, um, this current fiscal year, where we're projecting that will end the year at just over ten point two million. So that's where our operating surplus comes from that we've been talking about all night of four point two million. And when we jump to next fiscal year.
That's not, that, that estimated is not the twenty three budget. That's actual numbers we think that actually got.
Yes, those are actuals. Um, last fiscal year, we get almost three point seven, and this year we'll, we're likely to come in at between four point one and four point two.
Now, I'm just, I'm hearing about the operating expenditures. All the things that one of the staffers did was give us an operating expenditure for twenty three that was budget. Compare that to budget for twenty four, even though twenty three actually came in a lot less. So it was, it was like getting two increases again. So that's all the rest, it's the estimate based on what we actually think we're going to spend.
Yes, it's the projected actuals.
Right.
It's a lot less than, than budget, more budgeted. And that's why you see it jump so much from twenty three to twenty four, because twenty four is the budget estimate. And they built in, um, we'll go through all of these departments, so I'm, I'm not going to go through them all now. But one, the big jump is the new debt service payment of one point four million. So that brings total, um, operating expenses to thirteen million, which would leave an operating surplus of two point one. That's all I have on expenses for now.
And we're back to me. Getting to the various part budgets, budget highlights for public safety. For police services, you're seeing a twenty percent increase over twenty twenty three or two hundred sixty nine thousand dollars. That's mainly due to compensation benefits increase twenty two percent for next year. We're seeing this all over the valley, that police costs are just going up for various reasons. That also includes a holiday differential, holiday pay, overtime costs a thirteen percent increase, and a six percent increase on equipment. So again, a twenty percent increase on police. On fire services, it's a hundred and twenty seven thousand dollar projected increase, that's seventeen percent over twenty twenty three. And again, on, on Goodyear Fire, that's a projection, that's not actual, right? Because they don't, right?
That's the estimate that they provide us, but their final won't be given to us until after our budget is adopted.
Excellent. On Goodyear Fire, that's a compensation and benefits increase of eighteen percent, cost dispatch decrease of four percent, cost per dispatch decrease of four percent, and EPCR's generated prediction decrease of seventy percent. So again, a seventy percent increase on fire and a twenty percent increase on police services. Any questions on public safety on this overview anyway? Okay. Next slide, please. Thank you.
Question back.
Yes, sir.
We got twenty percent, twenty-two percent on one line item, and seventy on the other. How much of that is dropping from the staff?
You go, you go back with this? Thank you, Mayor. You're asking on, on police versus fire, sir?
They're, they're hitting our numbers at twenty, you know, out of apples, twenty-two percent increase in, in paying them based on, on cost.
Their officers are going.
Their officers, you're getting twenty percent, they agree, right? Okay, council.
Pushing the compensation with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Budget highlights operations, fifty-six thousand nine hundred dollars. We did have one administrative assistant position and eliminated two part-time head of positions. We eliminated the vacant deputy director of public work position and community management assistant. Those two changes alone represent a hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars savings. We also cut, looked for square marketing, a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Next slide, please. Perp personal issues. Minimum wage increase was a total of sixteen thousand one hundred dollars. As of January one twenty three, increased eight percent. Estimate January twenty twenty four took up another eight percent. These are things that are out of our control, of course. Um, staff-wide, we're looking at a eight percent cost of living adjustment, our COLA of eight percent. Again, the average West Valley COLA merit rolls of those cities, what they're doing, they're averaging a total of nine percent between merit and COLA. We built in ten percent in motion to allow for that, but still open for discussion. Again, we build in eight and two, and Valley-wide averages a nine between COLA and merit. Two percent merit adjustment is seventy-one thousand dollars. Of course, that is up to two percent based on floor performance. That doesn't necessarily mean points would get two percent. So again, eight percent COLA, two percent merit, which is only ten. Market adjustments is forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, health insurance increase of eighteen thousand two hundred dollars. Excuse me. Any questions on this slide? This, of course, is the city manager budget. Mayor and council, I realize these numbers are hard to, so what I'm going to, I'll help you guys to see. Again, you can use our part copy there, you're all can look in and follow along. What I'm going to compare is the twenty twenty three actual column versus the twenty twenty four budget request. For twenty twenty three, we budgeted five eighty-eight. For twenty twenty four, we're looking at six thirty-three. So that's a forty-five thousand dollar increase. There is various reasons for that. One is the special project manager position, our current special project manager is J. Kyrie, and he's under engineering. Now, our new special project manager is going to be a combination of the city planner and special projects manager in one position, and for that reason, we're moving that to the city manager department. Again, that's a normal split. You'll see that cost of that position split between mine and plane. Also, conferences, classes, traveling for two attendees at ACM Anewer Summer Conferences and annual legal cities and towns. And again, we removed the Litchfield Square cost, which was JLO. Any questions on the city manager budget? Moving on to the council commission. For twenty twenty three, we had budgeted thirty-six thousand seven thirty-five. For twenty twenty four, requesting fifty thousand four hundred and fifty. There's a few things for that. One of them, we did see a two thousand dollar increase in the West Park. We are hoping to do the showcase of cities this year. For those of you that don't know what showcase of cities is, that's the, the cities display, the legal cities conference we do annually. It's been some years since we've done that. I can say in nine years here, we've never done this, because so many years were in COVID, and we're about to go back there and showcase the cities again. There's also league conferences down here, and of course, we did put money here for meeting space. This last year, we paid a fifth of money renting various meeting spaces. As you know, we don't have a large meeting space, and when we meet at St. Peters, when we meet at Sowers Hall, when we meet at Litchfield Elementary School, there's a cost to do that. So that is a new cost you didn't see before. We added forty-five hundred dollars for that for this next year. Any questions on council commission budget? Slide please. Next up is city card budget. For twenty twenty three, we had budgeted three hundred and five thousand dollars. For twenty twenty four, budgeting three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. A few reasons for that, that includes the conferences, classes, and travel for legal cities, and then showcase of city for training, and also the election fees for our charter city election. On charter city election, again, there will be an election this fall, and there will be one in March of next year as well. Questions on that?
Is that the, is that the county fees when I do those, or is that what? Is it at the bottom?
Yes, please. Other questions on part budget? Moving forward to the city attorney budget, this one's, it is easy. It remains the same. For twenty twenty three, it's the same for twenty twenty four, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Paige, turn back to you.
Thank you. Um, for the, um, budget and finance, um, for twenty twenty three, um, the budget was three eighty-one, seven fifty-seven. For twenty four, uh, we're requesting four twenty-six, six eight. Some of this is because, um, the Arizona Department of Revenue Software System, there's a new fee that the state is charging us. Um, the estimate I was given was fifty-six hundred. Um, our contracted auditors, they have, we're, we're in a three-year contract with them. They have a built-in increase in their contract. And then, uh, the fire, the municipal firefighters council fund, um, is also required in statute. And not a huge increase, but a slight increase there. Any questions on finance budget? Um, the information technology, um, last year, or this current year, was one ninety-five, oh seventy-three, and for twenty four, we're, we're requesting two thirty-one, three twenty-nine. We have made some significant changes to our IT, um, infrastructure, and we moved from, um, basically an on-prem model to a hybrid. And we have a lot of, a lot of our data is in the cloud now, which requires, um, uh, monthly maintenance and subscriptions. So that's, um, the biggest part of the increase is in the software. Questions on IT?
Next up is human resources and resource management. For twenty twenty three, we had a budget of three ninety-four. For twenty twenty four, requesting a budget of four thirty-four. That includes several things. One of those is continuing the vacation self-back programming that Mary and Mary put in place last year, and also membership stipends. That was a change we made last year because of tax laws, we made that change. And also projecting rate increase for liability insurance. The liability increase alone is roughly twenty-five thousand dollars. Any questions on HR budget?
Excuse me, you said a total of question with twice all. Excuse me, it looks like this difference, the difference column is between the twenty twenty-four budget and twenty twenty-three budget, not, not the actual.
That's correct, this is comparing, um, budget to budget.
Budget to budget.
Uh huh.
And the, the budget that you have requested for, uh, well, this is the, so the budget point three for, for wages, that was two forty-five. It looks like you're gonna spend around two nineteen.
That's because we built in budget capacity for the vacation sellback program, so it's hard to estimate how many people will apply for that and will qualify for it. That's the big swing in the HR wages and benefits, is that vacation sellback.
So is that built in the two seventy-one also?
Yes. So, it's around thirty thousand.
Just so everyone's clear what the mayor's talking about, when I'm comparing budget years, I'm comparing twenty twenty-three annual budget and a twenty twenty-four initial budget request column, I'm not using the annual projection column.
In most cases, almost all cases, twenty-three actual is significantly less than twenty-three budget.
Yes, sir.
So these increases are, the increases are actually more, if they, if we spend the budget they're asking for a point four, the increased cost will be significantly higher than what's with the, what we're actually.
I, I can speak from annual projection column, you'd rather use that one?
I'm sorry?
Would you rather me use the annual projection column for discussion, sir? I can.
No, you know, the problem, the problem is, this is a problem that's been true with city budgets forever. You've got, and I don't know if we work over a really good way to resolve it. It is, is, you have, you are incentivized to budget as high as possible because of, of problems. Once you set the budget, you can't go above the budget.
Sure.
But you should be incentivized at spending as low as you can. And the problem is, when we try to stay higher doing during the year, if we have a budget number that is inflated, because you wanna make sure you've got a level of capacity spent, then it's hard to compare against uh, how much more efficiently managing the operations.
That's correct.
So it's a, it's a, it's a, it's just, it's a conflict that's built in the system. And I don't know a good way to fix it. We, we used to call the managed budget versus natural budget. I think one of my colleagues did one of that. And that's, you know, it's, we need to have a ways, we need to have a way within this process, once we get that adopted as number, that we may understand as inflated, we need to have a way to manage managers to see that they're doing a good job to be as efficient as possible. Running the department.
Right, agree, just because it's there, it doesn't mean that you have to spend it.
Correct.
Uh, for those of you that don't know what point the mayor's made, is that when we do draft budgets, so the way city laws are set up, as crazy as it may seem, your tentative budget is actually more important than your final budget is. For example, in state law, there's no deadline for publication of a final budget, as crazy as that might be, though there is deadlines to tentative budget. And as the mayor said, when you do tentative budgets, you can never go up, you can only go down. And for that reason, you set a higher tentative budget, so you always have more than enough. Because once you publish a tentative number, you can't go above it, you can go down, but you can't go up. So exactly as the vice mayor, as the mayor's saying, that's a, a fluke in state law, it just is. Other questions on HR budget? Thank you. Next up is the public courts budget. You'll remember from an earlier slide that we reduced, or eliminated the deputy public court position, and because of that, you'll actually see a decrease in public courts. The twenty twenty-three budget on public courts was three point four, or three point four six million dollars. Twenty twenty-four request is three point four four nine. Public work budget is a regular logical, of course, just to use the size of department that it is. A few things on there again, is that we eliminated that deputy position. We also converted two existing positions to crew lead positions. Excuse me. And we reduced the Hilltop cleanup by fifty thousand dollars, since the major cleanup was completed in twenty twenty-three. Just to be clear on that, there's a separate money for, uh, separate CIP money for the Hilltop. That's in the CIP budget, not in this one. Let me clear on that here. Any questions on public court budget?
Question. Uh, thank you, uh, Matthew.
Yes, sir.
You mentioned the Roma homestead decrease. What is the historic building and grounds, thirty thousand dollars? It's about, uh, five lines on the bottom.
Bear with me, sir.
Yeah, it went from seven thousand to thirty thousand.
The roof of it, maybe?
Is that, that's, that's St. Mary's South, sir. And of course, we maintain the church as well.
Uh, that was my next question, is it the Catholic church, question with one, is that children here also?
Actually, I'm gonna ask Kyle to make sure, they're, they're both built in that number, Kyle?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. And then, uh, there's a modular lease in here for four thousand a year, what is that?
It's the public works.
That's the office by the city hall, sir.
The office behind city hall, that's only four thousand a year?
That's right, is it?
Yeah.
It's not a lease payment for higher than that.
Eight six two two a month, three three four two a month.
I'm sorry, did I what?
Three forty-two a month.
Yeah.
And we actually decided a couple of years ago that.
I like this one, it's much better than what I was thinking.
I always say so. Other questions? Building safety budget, for twenty twenty-three, we had a budget of a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, for twenty twenty-four, we're looking away at one ninety-five. A few things that include, we moved over the emergency management duties. It used to be emergency management duties were only assistant public court director, but because we eliminated that job, we moved it over to the building safety director. And we also reduced contract inspections as more of a completed in-house. Any questions on building safety? I'm try, I'm trying to keep it silent, I know it's not the most exciting information. Um, code enforcement for twenty twenty-three, we had a budget of ninety-nine thousand dollars, for twenty twenty-four, requesting a hundred and seven. That includes additional travel and additional trainings, we're looking to update code enforcement notices. Questions on code enforcement? Moving into the planning budget, again, as I said earlier, we have combined the position of city planner with a special projects manager for Litchfield Square. So you, we split that between the city management budget and the planning budget. And you might remember, we haven't had a city planner on staff in a long time, so that is a, a nice change for us. The twenty twenty-three budget was a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars with initial budget request for next year of one ninety-four. Again, that include what I just said, as far as position goes, and those are split fifty-fifty, and we also removed the budget for contract planning services. Any question on planning services budget? Last mayor, you have a question, sir? Okay, I'm just watching your eyebrows. Moving into engineering services, for twenty twenty-three, we had a budget of four forty-seven, and for twenty-four, requesting a budget of three forty-four. That is a large decrease of twenty-three percent, and the main reason why, again, is we moved the special projects manager position out of engineering and into mine, because of the changes at Litchfield Square. So that made, of course, city management budget increase, but the engineering budget decreased. And the reason we did that is because the position is now a combination of two departments, and we thought it made sense to have that under city management versus under community development, if that makes sense. We also reduced the contract engineering budget and the clear pre-clean budget as more that is being handled in-house. Any question on the engineering budget? Yes, sir.
I have a question in general. Do, do we have a place in this presentation where we can see all of the wages and benefits that were left as last year? All the wages and benefits that we spent last year, particularly spent in weather, ocean, protection. We combined all these things, because you've got some departments in Milwaukee, because you moved somebody over here, down, and so it's hard, it's hard to follow that, unless we can see the, see the one line up. There's all the people who work for us, particularly the cost for this year, cost projected for action.
We can tell you the number here, sir, for wages and, for merit and COLA for next year.
Wages and benefits.
That we did. Yeah, I don't know if we ever broke out.
It's just that I'm taking all these line up and I'm mad about it. You see, I'm, I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I, I don't have that in here, but as, as he's talking, I can do that.
Well, or do it, just do it for the future.
Okay.
I, I wanna see what the change is really in our, in, in the total wages and benefits. This year, actual for this year, projected for action.
So we did that.
Do you wanna see the wages and benefits combined, or do you want them broken out separately? Also, we've, fire years, we've seen them broken out, and it's been interesting to see that, you know, benefits in some of these positions are over sixty percent of wages.
Yeah, we can, we can, I'm really not interested, I wasn't asking the question, because of any particular department we could break it out, I don't think you'll see that, that kind of disturbing if you look at, you know, totals. But just what, I'm just, what I'm curious about is, we changed a lot of positions, we added some, we subtracted some, we've got some people retired, we've got new people.
You wanna see the overall change?
I wanna see the overall change, what, what's happened to our, to our positive employees? And then, I wanna know what drives, what's, what drive, what, what does drive the bad change? It's a clarity that I've never seen in recent wages, you get some increase in benefits. You get plus, plus people, minus people, I'd like to see our overall rise on it.
Be glad for that, that's it.
What should staff do, so we, we increase staff, obviously that's the increase.
That's part of what we'll ask about that. This is the way that, that staff has suggested we run this, release next year, just like in Omaha, what is, what's the impact?
Any questions on the engineering budget? Next up is magistrate court. For twenty twenty-three, we budgeted one eighty-two, for twenty twenty-four, we had two oh six. A few changes in there, we are required to report audit every three years, so you will see that, that's, actually, that's been reduced because of that. Prosecution fees have increased, DEU access files have increased, and definitely cost in there in twenty-three is forty-five thousand dollars, just thirty grand over budget. So yeah, we're doing a lot more enforcement, there's a lot of people having too much fun out there, one of the two, but either way, we're doing more prosecutions. We did increase travel costs, cover the cost of training for judicial conferences. And we are budgeting for office furniture for court, but that being said, that comes out of the court enhancement fund, that's outside of the general fund. Questions on the court budget?
Was it really a three hundred percent increase in prosecution cost?
Yes.
Let's see. Yes, sir.
Fifteen forty-five. Actually, we're from four and one, which is.
We've also been prosecuting more, um, code enforcement type cases. It's my understanding, the past, sometimes we've let, I, I hate to say it, um, in, in the past, we've let things kind of go when they were considered a significant issue, and we're, we're pushing those more through to get them done, sometimes it takes prosecutor. Sometimes it's ridiculous what it costs to prosecute a minor charge, but it isn't fixed. Other questions on court? Moving forward to public safety, against the ones we've already discussed. So, we talk about public safety, public safety is a lot of different things, because in much of our reports, our police and fire are contracted. This is a reminder, animal control is contracted with Ameri-Copa County, police is contracted with the city of Evanville. We also have the Fox safety system, our cameras, we have fire contracted with city of Goodyear, and of course, we have jail fees. So there's a lot of different things in public safety. The twenty twenty-three budget was two point two million dollars, for twenty twenty-four, looking at two point five nine seven, for a total increase of sixteen percent. And then we already discussed some of the reasons for that. Any questions on public safety budget? I would tell you, I would look for public safety costs to continue to increase, I just will. It's getting harder and harder to find people that wanna be policemen, the firemen, for various reasons, that's a bigger conversation, but I would expect that pace to keep going. Questions on public safety? Moving into recreation services, as you know, we treat recreation a little different here, Litchfield Park Recreation Services are a recreation general. In some ways, it's an enterprise park. So for recreation services, we have revenues for this, for this year, twenty twenty-three at seventy-two thousand dollars. For twenty twenty-four, we're looking at eighty-five thousand dollars, or sixteen percent increase in revenues.
What caused the decrease, went from four actual, actuals to twenty-three estimate? You know what caused that decrease?
On recreation services, sir?
Because it went from hundred, from three to eighty-five.
Bear with me, sir.
Twenty twenty, twenty twenty-two actual versus twenty-three projected actual. Down by forty, forty thousand dollars.
Uh, it was the, it was the, um, annual program activity fees were all being applied to rec services rather than the individual activities. So the revenue didn't change, it's just being allocated more accurately to the different, you know, aquatics, sports, et cetera.
Versus being more divided, more appropriate as it was for sport, if that makes sense.
All right. What I'm curious about is, well, we had, we had been shooting for roughly a fifty percent cost recovery. And we can't see, we can't see this, we have so much detail, but we can't see that, we can't see what the cost recovery is in this way. Because it's spread out, you got revenues and, and you got revenues and expenses spread in all kinds of places, but I don't see the summary that brings it all together, so we can say, here's our peers in that, recreation area, that includes everything. This is our cost recovery law.
I have that available, I can pull it up, won't you continue?
I think it'd be, again, that's one of those topics that we need to work on in the future. Realize that this budget is something we're moving with over the next year, but that issue of cost recovery is, well, that's really what the council is gonna pass. Should be interested in looking at, as opposed to all the individual details, not as many as.
Yes, sir. Just so everyone's clear what the mayor's speaking about, when we talk about recreation, our recreation department is expected to have a fifty percent ROI. What that means, of course, is that our recreation is supposed to make up fifty percent of its costs. And it does, and one fifty that more should be refreshed up. Councilor Roman, did you have a question there, sir? I'll take, that is a no, okay.
Got a question?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Friends of the Rec donations, explain that, that it's not up, how do we get it, what is it?
Yes, sir. So, Friends of the Rec fund is interesting, that's one that we actually moved in-house, it didn't used to be on city budgets at all. And we moved that in because it should be tracked. Something like Friends of Rec should be audited, it's not really city money, so to speak, but we put it in here because it would be tracked, because it should be. To show how much was borrowed and how much was spent, and we've been in the process of doing that. There's been some changes with Friends of Rec, for example, the main person with Friends of Rec for years, of course, was David Schlock. And of course, David passed away, and actually now, I believe, I'm pretty sure that Sonny is the, Sonny is the person on Friends of Rec today.
So the Kiwanis? Schlock is where the Kiwanis, and that's where the lodge place, the rec came from.
Here's with books. Friends of the Rec is separate from the Kiwanis and Litchfield, the tip was one of the boards of books.
Okay. So we have a board, the rec has a board, it's a nonprofit, totally independent board from us.
The rec is not specifically involved in running Friends of the Rec, that's an outside organization. But my understanding is that we are now tracking, uh, the donations, because Friends of the Rec has basically been donating strictly to city rec programs and not to other programming. So we are tracking that for Friends of the Rec and tracking our income and expenses related to it.
That's correct. Sounds like a program we should support from then to soon.
Yes, sir. So, um, revenues preparation again for twenty twenty-three was seventy-two thousand dollars budgeted, for twenty twenty-four, eighty-five thousand dollars, or sixteen percent increase on revenues. On the expenditure side, twenty twenty-three, we had two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars budgeted, on twenty twenty-four, we're looking at three hundred and five thousand dollars. So again, for twenty twenty-four. So again, for twenty twenty-four, again, just on recreation services, eighty-five thousand dollars in revenues, three-hundred-and-five expenditures. Again, only on rec services. The cost recovery just on recreation services is twenty-nine point nine-four percent. But that's a piece of things that includes. The mayor had asked earlier, what was the rec overall? The rec overall is the number we want to look at. And in fact, you probably don't see it, but it's on the bottom of this slide. That rec overall, including all programs, has a cost recovery of fifty-five point three percent.
Where, where are you at? Just have a little bit.
It's, you might not be able to see it. So it's right there at the very bottom of the slide. See the very bottom line there?
I understand overall, overall, it's got a cost recovery of fifty-five point three.
Correct, sir.
I just emailed Maria the detail. If you want to pull that up, we could see all the programs as a whole.
Yeah, it would be helpful. Because just literally, I was kind of surprised when the first, the first one we started out was twenty-nine percent. And I, and I went through there, I guess I didn't stop to read the footnotes. But it would be nice to see how that footnotes put together.
Sure. Do you have any questions?
Can you scroll up, thank you. The rec services that Matthew just went over is just under twenty-eight percent. Preschool is, has a hundred and five percent cost recovery. Aquatics is fifty-four, sports is sixty-five. So rec overall is fifty-five and a half percent. The top is, um, fiscal year twenty-four budget. And then the bottom is the fiscal year, our current fiscal year project, projection. So this year's projection is actually sixty percent.
Sixty percent is good. All right. Much better number than what we saw. Well, it's hard to see it with all this detail. It's all that information's here, you just got to go through and pick it out.
Rec service is complicated because you have something like recreation services, which makes twenty-nine percent. But then you have something like our preschool program, which makes well over a hundred percent. So they balance each other out. So that's why you get the overall picture, as the mayor was asking for, of fifty-five percent. Moving on to the preschool budget. So we always like to say that our preschool is basically the enterprise fund, and then it always makes a profit. So our revenues for this year for twenty-three were a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. For twenty twenty-four, projected to make one-thirty-nine. On the expenditure side for twenty-three, a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars. On the one, twenty twenty-four, one-thirty-two. Our cost recovery is a hundred and five percent on our preschool program. Moving into aquatics. On the revenue side for twenty-three, we had an annual budget of a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars. For twenty twenty-four, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, or a five percent increase on revenues. On the expenditure side, twenty twenty-three, two-hundred-and-twelve thousand dollars. Twenty twenty-four, two-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars. Our increase is nine percent. A big part of that, of course, is minimal wage went up this year, and that affects a lot of the lifeguards. Our cost recovery for our aquatics program is fifty-one percent. I think staff does a good job of keeping that where it is. It was just a few years ago that we fought hard to increase the aquatics program. Because when we first got into it, they were making twenty-nine percent. So it's, a lot, a lot harder work to keep it there. Questions on aquatics? Moving into youth sports. Revenues for twenty-three, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Twenty twenty-four, a hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars, or eleven percent increase. On the expenditure side, twenty twenty-three, two-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand dollars. Twenty twenty-four, two-eighty-five, gain increase of eleven percent. With a cost recovery of sixty-five percent. Moving into community services. Community service revenues for twenty twenty-three, nineteen thousand dollars. For twenty-four, ten thousand dollars. The big decrease there is, we changed city line response much advertising, of course, this work. We switched method of that. For expenditures for twenty-three, ninety-nine thousand dollars. For twenty-four, one-twenty-two. Budget highlights included, again, city line change. We did continue Channel Eleven, you may remember that last year, because it's just no longer being used. We also included money in here for a ride sharing program. We're going to bring an I G A for that next month, for that, something you guys decided we want to do. We build the budget capacity. If we decide not to, we can certainly take that out. Questions on the community services? Moving into special events. Special events for twenty-three, three-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars. For twenty-four, three-hundred-and-thirty thousand dollars. Special events expenditures, twenty-three, three-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars. Twenty-four, three-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars. That's a cost recovery of ninety-one percent for our special events. One note there, there will be no fireworks show this year at Wigwam. We have traditionally paid for half the fireworks in that, and we're no longer doing that. But that is that, um, Wigwam will no longer be doing fireworks show. That's not, not our decision. Questions on our special events budget?
Half the event was sixty-five hundred dollars.
Yes, sir. Oh, half fireworks.
Half the fireworks, sure. For, for pink, wouldn't it be worth putting those coming off of the city?
The problem, the problem, the problem, sir, is where do you do it?
Would not be.
We did a couple years and almost burned the city down. And we have a lot more open space than. Remember, you did firing on fireworks and that, right?
Other question on special events budget? You guys have heard me talk enough. At this time, I'm going to try, we're going to go over the page for C I Ps.
Thank you. Our capital improvement budget, just to, I'd like to give a summary at the start before we go through all the projects. Our one-time revenues, which are used to pay for our one-time capital. I have estimated one-point-five million in construction sales tax. Um, if we do issue the new bonds for G M P five, that will be nine-point-two million. Um, three million for the public works facility. And in the remainder of the storm drain project, um, the reimbursement for Maricopa County, uh, just under one-point-two. And then our one-time capital expenses are just over twenty million dollars with, uh, Litchfield Square G M P five at nine-point-two, and public works at three, taking a lion's share of that. And then the remaining are city C I P projects at seven million, eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So that would give us a net of five million, one-sixty-four. That if we did complete all of these projects and we did issue the bonds, um, we would have to use five-point-two million of city reserves to complete all of these projects. So the listing of projects, um, it's, most of them are just carrying forward from the list that we have this current year. Obviously, the two big ones that we've been talking about all night are G M P five and public works. And to complete the storm drain at just over two million. Um, I did put a million in capital contingency. I don't think this city has ever completed every project on the C I P list. I think it's more to identify the needs of projects that need to be complete and give an estimated cost. Um, so we can plan for those in the event that we do move forward with, with these projects. I, I won't go through each one individually unless you would just like me to, or you have any questions about a specific project.
For the benefit of the council members. This, we look at, uh, C I P projects, two or three or four or five times before the committed projects. So if this list, the only thing that is a committed project is number three. That's our storm, storm break. And we are doing that now, some of it will be, will not be completed in this fiscal year, so it is a committed project for next year. Everything else on here are the things that will come back to us with more specific plans. And we will approve, in some cases, we may approve number one, G M P five, and we may well approve that whole budget. Or we also might choose not to do the whole thing. So it will come back for discussion also for each of these things, with a special storm, storm, stormwater system.
So if we budget for, just include it in the budget capacity, um, like the mayor said, each individual one comes back for approval. Um, just budgeting the capacity allows the council to make those decisions throughout the year?
Just one small question for a bit. We have, we have received sixty-eight thousand for the traffic signal and fries, and forty-five thousand for, and that we, we have another amount that we have received, uh, cashing in. So where are those amounts in either reserve or, or somewhere restricted, kind of general fund reserve, or restricted, uh?
It's, these are actually, they're recorded in the financial statements as a liability. Um, so they're just, it, it would come out of the city general fund.
So there's, there's not an actual, uh, restricted bank account, this money has basically. So when we see that, we may have received it, but we have to pay for it in the general fund.
Yes.
Mr. Wais, may I?
Where on the list is the right turn lane northbound on the Short Road in Calabac? And I think I saw something somewhere where there were two possibilities. There were a short right turn lane, maybe a bigger right turn lane. Maybe that was in a staff report.
Yes. It's on the, almost at the very end. Congestion at Litchfield Road and Calabac right turn lane, option one, a hundred and fifty-six thousand, and option two is.
What number are you on? Other page, whatever.
Other non-graduate tax projects.
Other non-graduate tax projects.
All, all, all.
Very, very last page, didn't see that.
Non-graduate tax projects, okay. So you got a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for option one. Is that, that's something that I think is pretty important to all of our citizens. That, that, that gets worse every month that northbound trying to get to France.
Some people just start moving up to the.
I don't know if we need to, you know, walk and get property and move walls, but, uh.
That's pretty tight on that.
Well, if it isn't going to drop really near, it could be twenty or thirty foot.
It's pretty tight. Because you're going to keep a pathway so that people from.
Yeah.
One of the fries connects and you move that pathway, we're not going to be doing this.
What I'm seeing is oftentimes, there's one car sitting there, five guys behind him, the turn signals on. You know, if there was, you know, thirty feet there, so that you could get around that one guy who's parked at the line right there, and the rest of us could make that right turn. I see people nodding out here. Uh, that, that would alleviate some of the problem. It'd be a short, quick, semi-subtle fix if there's such a thing as a city doing several fixes. Anyway, it's, it's, it depends my thought. The other one is, um, I don't know where that's on here either.
What's that, sir?
Um, I have made some, made a request a long time ago to try and get some concrete walkways between the villages and the bollard wash.
It is on here, that's on twenty-six, sir, that's number nine, F Y twenty-six.
The, and I think that thing went the way of the scout lodge was beginning to be far greater than what I was anticipating. There are a few spots out there. We, we don't need to have an access at every cul-de-sac and the end of every cul-de-sac out there. Um, there are a few spots out there where the ground is actually level. And it's a matter of, in my simple mind, scraping the rocks out of the way and putting in the four-foot wide, ten feet, fifteen-foot long concrete path just to get over to the main path there. Some people on their bicycles can, can get through, they're not going through that, what looks like almost one inch crushed granite. Uh, it's in our landscape area there, which is what they're doing. Uh, but you only need a couple of ways to get over there. I don't need to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to do that. I think it's just a matter of maybe fifteen feet of concrete, four feet wide, in maybe two or three places.
And we keep it in control.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, and I know we spend forty bucks a foot for concrete when we put it in, but, um.
That is really nice.
Yes.
It's color.
No, that is a food color, that's only ten bucks a foot. But I, I think there's some, a simple fixes that we could get to quicker, if you get, to get access to the bollard wash. I mean, it's a nice, it's a nice amenity. It ain't ours, we don't pay for it, but Dujers gave us permission, I believe, to build something to access it, so.
And Dujers actually started putting the pathways in, bollard wash doors and all that, that would help itself.
Yes, well, yeah, the pathway is now granite and stuff, but, um, again, I'd be happy to, to go with somebody over there and just meet and just look at a couple of spots. You know, we just get, you know, I don't, I don't need to cut down, there's one spot where you got a three-foot drop. So I don't need to build a wheelchair ramp, even three feet. Cut down to the other end of that cul-de-sac, and there's no drop. And, uh, you know, we put a four-foot wide side.
We'd be glad to, maybe we can check it out the other side.
Any comments on C I P?
We go to the next slide, please. The C I P that's outside of the general fund. Um, for HERF, we have the Daiso Road and the Dean School Road project at seven eighteen. And then the, the annual city line group program of five forty-one, bringing the total to one million, two fifty-nine. I just want to point out that as we get the fund balances accumulated in the HERF fund spent down, once that's spent down, the average revenue is going to be about five-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand. So once the reserve is spent down, then you'll see that HERF, HERF budget will only be the revenues that we bring in. We have been spinning down the A R P money. Um, so we'll have about two-hundred-and-eighty thousand left, um, assigned to the Calabac parking lot design and construction. And this, again, is just a, uh, list of identified needs. And we've projected out five years. So for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, we have eighteen million, one ninety. Next slide. HERF, I dropped it to five fifty, assuming that we'll spend all of the accumulated fund balance in twenty-five. And then at twenty-six, we've identified thirteen million. Next slide. Um, two-point-seven in twenty-seven. And then it's so far out in twenty-eight, but about one million, eight fifty. Bringing the grand total of all the C I P projects for those years, um, fifty-seven, about fifty-seven point nine million. Next slide, please. Next one? I'm sorry, it's up on it. These are just some other, we've already talked about, um, the Litchfield Road, right turn lane, but just some other projects that have been identified that haven't been prioritized just yet. Next slide, please. So the fund balance estimate, um, the fiscal year twenty twenty-three ending, which is what we've been talking about quite a bit tonight, I'm estimating at twenty-three point three million with eighteen point two of that unassigned. So for the twenty-four budget, this assumes everything that we've already gone through tonight, everything with, um, salary benefits, the new debt payment of one-point-four million. Um, all of the C I P projects that we just went through, and the bond proceeds of twenty-three million. Um, leaving an estimated fund balance of twenty point, twenty million, two eighty-seven, five eighty-four. With thirteen million, seven seventy-eight of unassigned. Again, that's if we've completed, um, every C I P project that's on that list. So the next, um, stage in the budget process will be for me, based on your feedback tonight. Um, the next process is for me to bring you the tentative budget in May, which that's, um, our budget ceiling, so to speak. And then I would bring to you the final in June, and then the tax rates for the special districts in July. So any, um, changes or anything that you would like to see me change, we can either have another work-study session. Um, next week, we think we can do it technically, yes. Um, or we can discuss it tonight, and then I have direction for what to bring you in May.
We need that, we need.
I think, I think we have a conflict next week, so what, what would you say?
Yeah. Well, that'd be a fun guy. Uh, I don't, if we have a doctor, he's far and alone, he's got something else. Not now, I think we're probably gonna be at a broad financial standpoint, do we wanna for long-term, short-term, and numbers we wanna bottom. And, you know, I think he's a person, I guess, or. Unless he's gonna give us something, yeah. The, the amount sort of, uh, you're gonna have to add, so it's just, uh, the time, we have to add that. So I, I would include on the next meeting, but you can tell that we're gonna, that this next is we're gonna move forward, that we just don't have a lot, it'll be, um, it was in twenty or twenty-three, or is it? Always possible to ten, I suspect, uh.
Uh, one, one thing to just keep in mind is, um, the expenditure limitation. Um, because we can exclude anything that's paid for with bond proceeds, so we have about ten million that we can spend outside of operations before we hit our expenditure limit. So just want to just keep that in mind, I'll, I'll have discussions.
We have twenty-nine, we're gonna borrow ten minutes.
Is it?
Yes.
Are we yet, are we gonna spend over two years?
Yes.
So the, I think this, this next meeting will be a lot more detailed, you know, those kinds of scenarios, where most of the time looking at the margins. Anything else we need to do in this work, this work center? Good. I don't, do you have, do you have a vote for the mayor's side? I just use this gal.
How do you choose gabbing in the message?
First study is current. All right, well, does anybody need a break from dinner or two, or? Do you have a way to, 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 to water? Okay, we also have a program, the City Council Meeting is ordered, we already have a bunch of agents, so start with the mayor, the council, the board. Council James, you're in your report, you're in your voice, right? Doctor Claire?
No.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Good morning.
Mr. Roebuck? You have a report, okay. That one, record.
Yes.
So, P W, P W, Litchfield, County Center, it's possible, he's on next. Next meeting. So, Senator Hager, do you have your report on current events?
Mayor and Council, I think we're gonna have a long enough meeting, it's not what I would go over my report, but I would like to introduce you guys, we have, um, our alternate attorney John Gamo here with us tonight, Joe couldn't be here for personal reasons, and we thank Tom for being here with us, and welcome any questions you may have, otherwise he's here. Thank you.
All right, next item, uh, agenda, it's response, estimating is called community, there were no speaks, speakers, vice meeting, response. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council in this meeting? Go on to presentations. First presentation, first presentation is employee of order. I hope we have Helen Ruhm, Ruhm, Ruhm.
Redlin.
Redlin. Is Helen here in time?
I'm here.
Please step up, you are our employee of order. And everyone who knows, have been in the council meeting, um, to support the case for the last sixteen years. This is a very important one for us, and I have a proclamation here somewhere, here we go. We will thank you for your wonderful service to our city. For, because lower taught by kind of employees, that's been the player of order. Thank you. So, Jane, employee of order, all is going to receive a day off. So you do such a great job that you can take it, uh, for, all right, thank you very much, all that. Next item is, uh, I'm gonna, I have prepared and will, will post the proclamation. Keep reminding everyone, or many people know that the month, I'm sorry, it's the week of April thirtieth to May sixth is professional municipal clerk's week, we have a professional municipal clerk who's serving our city, we'll thank her for her service, and uh, recognize the importance of clerks across the country and for, for all the cities and towns. Thank you to Terry and, and, and the city clerks, uh, during the week of April thirtieth to May sixth. We also have a Arbor Day proclamation that will be posted, letting everyone know that we support Arbor Day, we support trees, obviously, trees and greenery are important to our city, and it's something that they, we take, we pride in, and I think our residents enjoy every day, every, every day of their work. And finally, we have to recognize the building safety month, the proclamation. Obviously, we all like to go into our buildings, we have to, like, they're gonna fall down. Like the parking garage fell down today in York City, yes. That's because building safety is part of our, our city. We don't, we have not had any buildings actually fall down, so we have some that, like, might need, and we're gonna replace them, right? So in order to, we will, we will, the proclamation will, will, uh, make sure that everyone knows that the month of May is building safety month. All right, we're gonna go on to our report section, sort of the fire department. Good evening, Mayor and Council, I'm at ball deputy chief with the fire department, here to review the stats from March of twenty-three. Do you have a, a slide? Okay, uh, for March, we ran a total of sixty-five calls in the Litchfield Park. That is, uh, that's eight more than we did in February, and four more than we did since time last year. One fire, which actually wasn't a fire, just put it on the stove, that was out when we got there. Fifty-six EMS calls, one generic, I would call it, call for service, three good intent calls, and four false alarms. Uh, the numbers that you guys like to talk about, Hacienda and Luloma. Luloma had eleven calls, four of them were false, and ten of them were transports. And Hacienda had nine calls, four of those were false, and six of them resulted in transports. Other than that, we had, uh, we did twenty occupancy inspections and one special event. Any questions on any of those?
Questions?
No questions, yes.
Okay, um, an added note, you're gonna see fence around Fire Station one eighty-three that primarily serves the Litchfield Park. We're not closing the station, we're renovating it, but we have put a giant trailer in front of it, if you've seen it. It's like quarters, but, uh, our crews will still be on site, so they can get here quick.
So they're moving out of communication and exercise, everything is coming out?
Yeah.
Good to have you.
It'll be interesting for the, our first one, in a trailer, but. Thank you for all you do.
We appreciate all your hard work, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to our report section, the Avondale Police Department, Avondale Litchfield Police Department.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor and Council, uh, Jonathan Martin, Assistant Chief, Department of Police Department, Lincoln Park. Uh, we'll start out by introducing Lieutenant Albaes, uh, he's part of the Litchfield Park, uh, service that he has to begin also, including myself, so I got the voters, and I'll be overseeing the day-to-day operations, and, uh, but also be here as council, telling that, so, again, Albaes, he's been on for a long time, so, uh, wealth and knowledge and information, so, this is the council.
Jonathan, welcome to our committee.
Welcome, thank you. You ever try to take my guy, I'm like, oh, you know. Again, okay, um, calls for service in the month of March, we're a little busy, we have three hundred and thirty-two calls for service. A good portion of those, I believe, are reference to community contacts. So with the nice weather out, everybody back, or out, she's out, walking around the park, or walking around the lakes, contacting citizens, we're out, walking around the businesses right now, so, uh, I introduce myself, making sure everybody's, uh, good, okay, you know, we can think, so, that's, that's what the increase of calls for service, uh, have been this past month, so it's not a bad, it's a little good thing. We had, uh, forty-six traffic stops in the month of March, and we issued, uh, twenty-seven warnings and nineteen citations. We had five flock alerts this month, or that last month, and out of those five, we had two contacts where we located two vehicles that had, uh, stolen license plates. Unfortunately, it was an M V D issue where they issued temporary, uh, place these cylinder vehicles, and so they weren't actually stolen. It was just, uh, an M V D issue, so we got them squared away, figured out, uh, back to M V D, so there wasn't, I mean, more issues. Given that twenty-two citizens assist in the month, we conducted eleven schools of details, a school meeting in session, and we conducted thirty-two speed zone details, which was partially for the schools, and then obviously on Litchfield Road, and round about Camelback, uh, right here, uh, four-way stop also with construction on, on, on Litchfield Road. We conducted, again, seventy-four, uh, community contacts, and sixty-seven of those were business, on top of those, were sixty-seven business chats. Uh, one of the other, uh, council services that we had last month was a, uh, actually, it was actually this, this month, we had, uh, we responded to an address on Luluna, you guys may, uh, remember that address, which, where we had a shooting last year, where a large party gathered and people started shooting and firing. This is a residence that we responded to again the other day, it was a reference to a sorority subject, male servant who had, was having issues with his girlfriend, um, allegations of, he said, she said, he, uh, we believe he was under the influence, uh, we also responded out to his house, contacted him. There was no crime that had been committed, but he had a petition, uh, order, uh, order to, a petition of order to take him to a R I A S, which is a mental health facility, a drug industry facility. So we, uh, took him to R I A S and, uh, took care of that order, so it was really, that was about it, but it was a, obviously, at that house, that's an issue. As we've been talking about that for several months, months, uh, that's on our radar, so, other than that, that's all I have for your calls.
Questions?
Guys stay on your radar, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
I, I get comments and I see social media, so I was wanting to ask the man here to ask you a question.
Yes, sir, uh, Vice Mayor, we, uh, our officers frequently drive down that road, uh, east, several times, Jeff. Hunk's our presence there is, is a big thing, it's been quiet a little while, so, it's on our radar, I'll listen. Any questions?
Thank you for your service to our community.
Absolutely, thank you very much.
Okay, next item is staff reports, the final, final report.
Mayor and Council, can you pull up the March sales tax?
Thank you, Matt, thank you for.
Yes, sir.
March, the next one, the last, there we go. Um, I'll start off with the sales tax report for, um, the month of March. Uh, we had another good month, uh, we were thirteen percent over March of twenty twenty-two. Um, retail specifically was up twelve percent, online sales were eighteen, uh, restaurant bars were up twelve, um, total of thirteen percent. Uh, construction sales tax, um, also had a really good month, uh, fifty-four percent over March of last year. Um, year over year, um, sales tax excluding construction sales taxes up ninety percent. Um, our construction sales tax is down forty-one percent. However, we know that, um, construction sales tax fluctuates based on activity. Um, next slide, please, are there any questions? And then if you could go pull up the monthly financial report. It's a separate attachment, there we go. So our total revenues, general fund revenues through the end of March is just over eleven million, so we're at eighty-four percent of our budget estimate of thirteen point two million. You can see our interest, um, we're at three, three hundred and forty-four thousand, um, as of March, so we'll likely, um, be close to five hundred by the end of the year. Our operating expenses are at seven point four million, or sixty-two percent of our budget estimate, making our, um, net general fund three point six million, uh, revenues over expenses. Our construction sales tax, um, just over a million, our A R P funds also just over a million. We've received, um, two million, one forty-five from flood control for the storm drain project, and we have spent, um, almost two point six million capital projects.
So two point one, is that their full contribution or?
No, um, some of it will come next year, I've got that budgeted in next, next fiscal year. And this brings the March meeting fund balance to twenty-five million. Uh, the next few pages are the rec and special events detail, um, it's included in your packet, I won't go through the details unless there's any questions. So our special revenue funds, um, starting with the HERF fund, um, through March, we've collected three hundred and seventy-five thousand. It's also earning interest, little, uh, thirteen thousand, four forty-eight, with a grand total of, um, just under three hundred and eighty-nine thousand. We're at seventy-five percent of the year, and our HERF fund is only at seventy-two percent, so I don't think we're going to hit the target estimate that was provided to us, um, last, last year at this time. We've spent four hundred and seventy-nine thousand, um, leaving us an empty balance of one point one million. However, Kika is getting ready to do a mill, overlay project that will, um, take a, a chunk of that balance down. For Litchfield Square, um, expenses that are posted through March are just over seven million dollars, leaving us an empty balance of, uh, one point five. Next page, please. Our streetlights improvement districts, um, revenue is, is under expenses right now, we've collected one sixty, expenses are one seventy. However, this will catch back up as the second half of property taxes start to come in. Um, we do keep a little, a small fund balance to cover these overages, so that leaves an empty fund balance of about sixty-five hundred. Uh, the court enhancement fund has, um, generated three thousand dollars in revenue, we've spent thirteen thousand, leaving us an empty balance of eighty thousand. Next page. That takes us to, um, our ju, our fund balance summary, um, twenty-five million in the general fund and two point seven in our special revenue funds. Um, nineteen million of that is an unassigned fund balance, and gives us about twenty-five months' worth of operating expenses. And that concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions if they're open.
Questions? Mr. Vice Mayor, thank you.
Page, uh, I, I've been reading, you know, na, uh, state, national articles about A D D conversion sales, and your reports are always very rosy. Are we, are, are you hearing anything, uh, what's going on statewide, expecting anything local, are we trending in any direction?
We're still trending up, um, which is unusual, it's like we're, it feels like we're almost in a bubble, but.
Is it just our area, or is it the state?
It's the state, and I think we're in a, we're unique, and that our business landscape is a lot of essential, essential needs. Um, so even as the economy fluctuates, you know, those essential, essential needs.
Look, keep, keep bringing us these great reports, okay, thanks.
I'll, I'll, thank you.
Okay, any other questions, Congress? Thank you very much for your report, next item is a report on PGA North Luluma.
Mr. Mayor, or the council, uh, not a lot going on in the Plume, it moves very slow, uh, we'll say that some of the updates we've been getting from PGA, the injection wells uh, generally west of Boulder are uh, essentially forcing the mass east and south. There is also two extraction wells that recently been converted to injection wells on the other side, closer to the ballparks at Good Year, uh, the Good Year ballparks and Palm Valley Elementary School. And what that is doing is it's actually making the mass skinny and forcing it south, so. Based on the geographic contours that I've been receiving and referring back to a couple of years ago, this is the first time that the mass is essentially moving south at. So, I'm very interested to see our labor results are going to be next year, we'll uh, sample them in November. Uh, I think that we will see even bigger declines than we did this year, so. All good news for what's happening with the uh, PGA.
Any questions about the Plume? All right, we'll move to the Capitol, Plume number two port also.
Okay, we'll go on to that, uh, Stax Park parking lot, uh, began construction uh, this, earlier this week. Uh, we will be installing a asphalt parking lot with fifteen parking spaces just north of the uh, Episcopal Church, just south of Stax Park. Uh, we worked with Parks, Park, or the Rec Center to move the uh, soccer fields and make them reconstruction. Uh, that project is a approximately two hundred and sixty thousand dollar project, it was budgeted in this year's CIP for two hundred and sixty-five thousand, so. We've got a good price in the contract. As Paige mentioned, the Litchfield Road Mill and Overlake Project has also started, uh, official NTP is Monday, but they've started some uh, initial work, you see that the M V board is out there, uh, they'll start milling uh, on s, uh, next week on Saturday. Uh, the reason why they have new weekend work is to uh, align with the pavement plant providing the asphalt, which will happen in the following week. That's a uh, four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar project was approved in two thousand and twenty, uh, with COVID and Litchfield uh, Square project uh, installing Roundabout and Southwest Gas High Pressure Main, all delayed, uh, this Mill and Overlake Project. So in about two and a half years, it's prospered up, uh, fifty, uh, almost fifty thousand dollars, about eleven percent, which is uh, under the market average, so. Uh, that contract modification was authorized by the city manager, and the NTP was granted for Monday, so, maybe about two weeks. Uh, even though it's not a CIP project, I did want to update council on the Southwest Valley Truck Study with a few numbers. They have given us a data dump, they haven't uh, released an official report yet, uh, but some interesting information. The uh, long-term noise analysis recorded uh, decibels of seventy-nine and eighty uh, decibels. Just to put that in perspective, that's the equivalent of a jackhammer working about fifty feet away, no gear protection. Um, the uh, this, this was located, the, the, the sensor was located in the vacant parcel of the northwest corner of Litchfield and Campbellback. So what that essentially says is Litchfield Greens is experiencing the same eighty decibels. Uh, another long-term, this, this one was very interesting to me. They put a noise monitoring station at the Palm Valley Nine, which is just west of the city of Litchfield, uh, Sea Limits. And that recorded decibels of eighty, so even louder than Campbellback and Litchfield, so.
Where was that again?
That was at the Palm Valley subdivision on the north side of Campbellback, just, just past uh, Little Park. Uh, the hours uh, are also consistent with what we've been noticing from the residents between hours of five-thirty and six-thirty in the morning. Um, and over there at Palm Valley was seven forty-five, eight forty-five, they measured in one-hour increments. Uh, so this is the loudest decibels in the entire three-day monitor. Um, something else to note is the vibration analysis, seventy-two uh, VDB, which is a vibration decibel, seventy-two is uh, nationally recognized as uh, bothersome to people. Uh, the equivalent of operating a jackhammer uh, is about uh, ninety. So, kind of compare, they measured over six hundred and eighty-six one-second verse, over seventy-two VDB, which means there were six hundred and eighty-six one-second of very uncomfortable vibration happening within fifty feet of Campbellback Road. And that's just one reading, so they took four along Campbellback, and they were all high numbers, so. What that does is substantiates our concern about the impact of truck traffic on Campbellback Road. Uh, so upcoming CIP projects, they mentioned the Dice Arena School Road reconstruction. Uh, we have uh, in the budget, just over seven hundred thousand dollars, uh, had a rough order of magnitude from a contractor on Mojave Coop uh, for just under six hundred thousand dollars, so. We got a very good estimate, and we'll be proceeding with that project in the next, this year should be approved. Uh, that's my updates for the CIP, those, any questions?
Does the Campbellback Road study uh, reflect any of the speeds of these vehicles that are given these readings, or is it just, is it ignoring any high speed?
It's purely empirical, it's, it's, it's recording the data as it comes by now. The presentation that they did give indicated that there are some factors such as if a truck uh, waters off of the lanes and hits the RPM over. They said that uh, that accounted for a few of the readings that they discerned. They also had to do things like uh, preclude when a loop air force phasers taken off from other sensors, or they're not discriminatory, so that you see a big spike, and then they know to take some of these uh, actions out, so. They, there was hundreds of thousands of data points that they reviewed, so they could take things like the RPMs, the jets, uh, other things out of, you know, people getting landscape done, blowers running, uh, so these numbers are the cleaned-up version, and it's just empirical collector's data.
Questions for council? Thank you. Indeed. Excuse me. All right, so this checks into our special projects update, it says Mr. Scott was made provider. Looks like he is a provider.
Sorry, what?
The agenda says we may provide.
Oh, may provide, well, pretty much out of all, I didn't know that.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, I'd like to start off with Litchfield Square. Again, the project's moving along very well, uh, the damage that was caused by the February sixth accident is now better here. Uh, still, I think some uh, work to do on some of the uh, papers and building, median. By the way, I'd like to introduce uh, Christie Hall, who is a community manager's project manager for the project. And Israel Santia, who is the project manager, this is a guy that does all the work.
She does?
Thank you for coming. Um, on Billings Parkway Extension and Desert Avenue, we've got all the curb and ground sidewalk and the first look of pavement complete. Uh, the two traffic circles are completed at Paloma and Desert. Uh, the concrete intersection corners, uh, cracking issue has been resolved. Uh, so we're looking forward to getting a lot of that concrete in place over the next couple of weeks. Uh, the tree grates at the intersection will be installed next week. Uh, sidewalk papers are complete, are nearly complete. Uh, the median RGV lighting system is complete. Uh, landscaping will be completed later this week, and the Paloma Avenue Extension, north of those park roads is important to Lot Three because it's a parking lot connected to that, that is obviously as well. Airline canal relocation work is all, is all complete, and then now we're just waiting for JDM uh, to sign off on the easements, uh, documents and get those back to us, so we can record them. Uh, Southwest Gas is currently making the final connection in Honeysuckle Street for the entire Litchfield Square gas system, meth gas system. And we're waiting for Liberty Utilities to respond to our request to turn over the water sewer systems to them. The community manager's done all the work, we're ready to turn them over, we just need to get them to say, okay. Uh, I also work with IT to get the uh, Litchfield Square page, a separate page up on the website, so now we can put on on the homepage, put on Litchfield Square, if you do, a separate page, it tells you all about the project. Uh, turning to the downtown storm drain project, again, moving, uh, moving along quickly. Uh, we now have all the easements in place from the private landlords, so we're, we're doing property removal. Uh, Fairway Drive is complete, the Elan Avenue is essentially complete. There's a little bit of restoration work on some of the curb and roads that needs to be done by some of the utility contractors. Old Litchfield Road, uh, is, the first phase of Old Litchfield Road is now complete. And we have the traffic, more contract holding back up the gap we wanted. Uh, and then they shift over to the west side of the street to continue on. Uh, there's still a little bit of manhole work that needs to be done there, but now they're working, uh, heading up towards Fairway Drive. And the next stage, once we get past Fairway Drive, will be to install an automatic traffic signal that will control the traffic there. As you know, the street gets real narrow, and there's not enough room to work on the storm drain at the same time that two-way traffic, so. You have to have one-way traffic, uh, the street will be open, but you'll just have to respond to the traffic signal. And then, um, towards the end of the project, the community manager will back and install all the patch basins, connector pipes um, in Old Litchfield Road, one set north of Honeysuckle, and then one set north of Church and on Black Fairway. And then, uh, beginning, we're now going to do the pump station installation for our path, underpass this week. I think that's all I have for March.
You had a lot of stuff, a lot of stuff, of course, it doesn't cost a lot, so. Any questions for Mr. Scott, special projects? All right, thank you for your report. Brings us to our consent agenda, item nine A through A through H, if any member of council wants to take any item off, it's a consent agenda for this. Mr. Blacksmare?
A through B.
Who, all of them? Okay, I might have to manage that. All right, if E are off, is anybody else? Okay, do you have a motion to, uh, at South Consent Agenda, item F, G, and H? All those in favor please say aye. Aye, both, all right, so, F, G, and H are approved. Item nine A approval of minutes.
Yeah, we can accept that, we can, we can just pretty fast.
Yep.
The minutes, March fifteenth, I had asked that my comments uh, on why I voted against the RV ordinance be incorporated in minutes, and it managed to say that I gave comments. And I'd like those comments to be spelled out in minutes to come back to us. So with that, I would like to move to approve the March twenty-fifth minutes of the city, uh, state of the city meeting.
Is that March fifteenth?
Correct.
Your second, second, the discussion, all those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, all right, so the March twenty-fifth meeting minutes are approved, March fifteenth, and we're going back for the fourth.
Yeah, as.
And B, amendment to the city council rules and procedures.
Uh, I spoke to city manager about this, and um, paragraph five point eleven point C on page seventy-five makes no sense. Uh, so I'd like to stay up to maybe clarify that, bring it back, back to us.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Vice Mayor, we looked at that one, I think that was an old, actual old wording, I think it's missing the word with. We could, we could certainly add that word, makes sense.
Okay.
Where is it? Which number is it?
Page seventy-five, uh, five point eleven point C.
You have a question on harassment as well, sir?
Yes, uh, page sixty-eight, three point nine, I had a question for Matthew about the definitions that were added. Again, I, I apologize, there was three hundred and eighty-nine pages in the agenda, and I scanned and read this about five times, I couldn't find the use of those, and they may be used in there, did, did you get that figured out?
Yeah.
Uh, page sixty-eight, sixty.
What was it, three point nine?
Three point nine, yes, yeah, there's four, I think four different, uh, new, uh, section three point nine definitions of harassment, sexual harassment, personal attacks, improper conduct, and discrimination. And again, I, I scanned it, and I couldn't find them in there, but maybe they are in there.
Uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, earlier we talked about the wording change from, it's, it currently says that in section, sorry, section six, city council will not tolerate harassment, et cetera, about changes that are to the city council will not. I think on that change, we could simply eliminate the word tolerate, or clarify the word, just say will not versus tolerate. That was one of the issues you had, correct, sir?
Well, yeah, I mean, it's definition of personal attacks. But is the word personal attacks used in the, in the body of this anywhere? Or did I just?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I believe it's in. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, I think the, the key section is three point eight, point eight, point six.
What, what page?
That is, I'm sorry.
Three point eight, eight six.
I navigated back to the table of confidence.
Three point eight is somewhere, it starts at sixty.
Yes, page sixty, sixty-seven is three point eight. And then at the top of sixty-eight, yep, is number six.
Okay, that's, that's the language I said before, perfect, thank you very much. So now I would move to a pass, to pass this with the other change that Matthew had suggested.
All right, your second. Any discussions? All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, nine B is adopted, is modified, and then C?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, um, I was thinking about you for you.
Yes.
I'm trying to blast through this, uh, I spoke to Matthew about this, uh, the last sentence of this resolution gives me concern. Uh, I think it needs to be tightened up, uh, I believe it could be easily inferred that this says that if a staff member gets training of an unknown sort, or a certificate of an unknown sort, they are entitled by right to a pay raise and a job title change. And we've had this kind of problem before, and I don't want to live through it again. So maybe that can just be cleaned up and brought back to us?
Yes, sir, Mr. Vice Mayor, I think we could actually certainly add some wording there to say, for example, with approval of city manager, I think that would be the easiest, the easiest change.
That the training has to get approval, or?
Well, I, I would say both.
Which, which ones are your?
Uh, the last sentence of this resolution, twenty-three, five, four, four.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, if I, if I may, I, if I'm understanding the Vice Mayor's concern, uh, perhaps you'd like to see something like, um, if a pay increase or a job title change is, um, is, uh, triggered due to a certi, certification, that will not become effective until the certification is required. You want that conditional, so it's not, it's not creating an automatic job change or?
Yes, I, I don't want somebody to show up with a certificate that says I went to an Excel class and got a certificate from Microsoft, and now I am entitled to a pay raise and a job change in classification.
Whereas, I think the point of this, this paragraph is if an employee is entitled to a pay increase or a job title change due to a certificate, it's, the point of this is the timing, right, is that that's not going to take effect until the certificate is any, that's the point. And so what we want to do is edit this so that there's no implication that there's an automatic pay increase or?
Yes, I'd like, I'd like, and if you want to do that and bring it back to us maybe in the next meeting, or do you have language you, you're suggesting right now?
I'd say bring it back.
Okay, we, we've had this problem before, and I, this can be a massively important issue uh, that the city manager may have to live through, uh, because I think he's probably lived through some prior yes, sir, issues with this, so.
We could certainly, maybe bring it back to. We could certainly, maybe bring it back to.
Okay. D, oh, yeah, continue? Okay, uh, D, the lease with Dan Mary's house. Uh, do, do I care if it's going to be removed?
Yes, so we're bumping into my eighty-one.
Okay, so that's, that's, that's coming up, okay. Uh, E, contract renewal for the magistrate court judge. Uh, Mayor, this was one of your issues, I think, when you first came on years ago. You had magistrate court doing monthly reports. We haven't seen a monthly report in years. This contract requires a monthly report? Okay, do you, do you want that in here? Do you want a monthly report? Do you care?
I would think it would be good to have a monthly report. A good report.
Okay.
I don't really need to see him down there for the report. Unless we ask him. But if he gives us a report, we'll license him to question stuff. So we just need, we need to enforce, we need to enforce that part of the contract.
To acquire monthly reports, huh?
Right.
Yeah.
Pretty report.
Yes, we certainly do that.
Okay, without a move to adopt or approve the contract renewal of magistrate court judge?
Your second. Turn the discussion. All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Item B. Well, item D, I thought that item D was, was why, that's why I would say aye. I knew you wanted to take that off, but I didn't mention that, so item D will come back. Now we'll go on to ten A, my normal rule is ten A, uh, this is a discussion. An impossible adoption of order resolution, a call for election of charter formation and board freeholders. Mr. City.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor and Council, this is, um, not required by law anymore, but it's more of a notice for the public. I am, uh, making aware of our election. Thank you, page eight. Uh, the purpose of this is for the pursuing of the formation and the election of board freeholders. I have until May eleventh to notify the county if we are participating. Our next council meeting is May seventeen. So that's why it's unevenly divided today. Do I have any questions?
Any questions, Council?
Motion to approve the resolution.
Your second. Discussion. All those in favor please say aye.
Aye.
All right, resolutions. Next is a contract with Waste Management for city revenues and recycling.
Mayor and Council, this is the contract with Waste Management. You may remember, we have been discussing this for several months. We put out a RFP last fall, and actually the only application we had completed was by Waste Management. Republic Service expressed interest, but they decided not to bid for various reasons. So we moved, we moved forward working on a contract with Waste Management. Again, the current contract with Waste Management will expire in June of this year, so we will not file a fee to get a new contract. Uh, a few changes this contract has, one is that now the biggest change is there is no rate difference for in-ground service and rolling can service. Rolling can service, which actions about ninety percent of the city decreased by roughly a dollar, where in-ground can service is jumping by about twenty dollars. In the past, they've all been the same rate. In-ground customers, rolling can service in the past, they all paid the same rate. And I would argue that rolling can customers have been effectively subsidizing in-ground can service customers. Because in-ground can service, it just, it requires twice the time to, to service an in-ground can than it does a rolling can. And it immediately, there were some trash truck do this. An in-ground can, it's a robot, it comes off the truck, picks it up, unloads it, and nobody gets out of the truck unless someone has dropped. Or an in-ground can actually requires the truck to stop, the guy gets off the truck, gets out, lifts, nobody puts it in, takes more time, et cetera. Um, as I told you guys before, I had actually never seen in-ground service before I came to Oldsfield Park. Doesn't mean anything wrong with it, I've just never seen it before, anyway. But again, for that reason, you have two different rates in this contract. Again, you have about twenty-four dollars for rolling can service, and you have forty-four dollars in some change for in-ground service. Again, in-ground service is only about ten percent of the city population. Um, one thing we can certainly do on this, if council proves this contract, I'm sure that Waste Management would be glad to say, we have Clark here with us tonight, so excuse me for speaking to you, Clark, before I say this. I'm sure that Waste Management would be glad to send out and load all their customers and let them know that this change will begin July first from the new rates, and customers can certainly just switch over from in-ground can service to rolling can service. I'm sure you'd see some of them would want to do that. Uh, one of the big reasons I say that Waste Management is sending that letter versus the city is that Waste Management has the list of addresses. So I think that'd be much easier for them to do that than city staff to do that. We would also include a note about recent ordinance changes, anyway. But that's the biggest change in this contract, again, is the price difference between rolling can service and in-ground can service. There are some other changes in there, a big difference we'll see here is CPI. You may remember in the past that CPI was limited to eighty-five percent of CPI. Um, we went back and forth a good bit with Waste Management's contract, as Clark will tell you. And what we came to on this is that for up to, up to five percent, they would get a hun- a hundred percent of, of CPI. However, everything over five percent would be at eighty-five percent of CPI. So again, if you were looking at a seven percent increase, they would get a hundred percent for up to five, and eighty-five percent of CPI for the difference between the five and seven, if that makes sense. Obviously, those are extraordinary years, if you're seeing CPI at seven percent. That being said, we all know we're seeing crazy inflation, that's why we're talking about eight percent coal this year, so. Um, other changes as far as the contract goes, as it is now, the city, actually, the city facilities, there is no charge currently. The city doesn't pay anything, that will continue for about a hundred years. We also put it in here for, um, roll-offs. In the current contract, there is no rates in there for roll, for roll-off services. If, sort of, for, if grandma passes away now, there'd be a fee in there where you could have a roll-off service come out. That's a change in this contract. We also put it in there, they can service all the various communities in the city as they should. And you may remember, we put in the wording or the ordinances, that all residents are serviced by the city contractor. There's always an argument, we have the citizens regularly showing where it says that I have to use it. So it's there, so. That's very much the high level view of Waste Management's contract. Um, also on the services, you may remember in the past that citizens could use their own can. Also, there are multiple sizes of cans. So the prices you see here, it's using the largest can for the price. And the reason why is because if you, if the smallest can was the standard, you'd have to go up more, as people would get their cans. But most people use the big cans anyway. So that's where the big can is the standard can, which is, of course, the ninety-six gallon can. That makes sense? That's very much how it is. Of course, I don't see if, if Clark might add some things to this, but anything on my point so far?
So there, there's a lot of people who do not have these cans you can pick up for a truck. Um, they don't have the ninety-six, sixty-five, thirty-two, whatever they are. So are they going to provide those to anybody who does not now have them?
That's correct, sir.
Because I don't see that in what it says, it, it's, it's, Clark's about an additional can, but it doesn't talk about, uh?
That's part of the contract, sir, they will be provided for anyone that doesn't have one. Citizens can choose to purchase an additional can. As you said, that fee is in the fee schedule. But Waste Management would provide a can to anyone that doesn't have one.
Is there a delivery fee for the initial container?
Clark?
Uh, yeah, so they can send, send two contracts, that's up to two means.
So, you know, for the initial container coming out, if there's nothing on the initial container, it's just a little service fee on the notes that we have. Is there an additional container, twenty-five dollar one-time delivery fee? And not for the initial container, if somebody's switching over to your equipment?
Clark, you might be on the podium, so we can hear you, sir. Thank you. Thank you, everyone knows Clark is, Clark runs for Waste Management.
Captain, are you, uh, just re, uh, requesting that, so I hear correctly?
Yes, sir. So for initially, if someone decides to change any of your equipment, or goes away from, is there a delivery fee for the initial cans to be delivered to them?
No, sir, that's up to two cans. Or do initially, yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
So they use two, they use two cans, then they pay an additional fee each month, this ten thirty-five, right?
So one, uh, Mayor, one's for trash, and one is for recycling.
Okay, so it's not two trash cans, right?
Sorry, so it's a one-time delivery charge, it's not, you're not charging every month? Is that what you're asking?
This says additional can, and then it's got twenty-five dollars delivery fee, and then ten thirty-five a month service fee per car.
That's correct. So you pay a one-time delivery fee, but there's a monthly service charge for Clark. So it's two different fees, if that makes sense?
So, so twenty-four dollars a month, you pay thirty-four dollars. If you have two trash cans.
That's correct, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I think you had a, a vice mayor ask last meeting. Um, our representative, there are seven residents that have more than two cans. At this time, they have three cans on site.
But so, does the twenty-four, does, is twenty-four dollars a month, is that for two ninety-six gallon trash cans, or one?
So two ninety-six gallon trash cans, trash is serviced twice a week, and recycling once a year, come on.
So that's one garbage can, one recycled cans, right? So not, not two garbage containers, but one garbage container, one recycled container.
Because I, I know my neighbor has two ninety-six gallon trash cans. It seems to have a lot of trash. So, so they're going to end up paying, you're not, they don't need another one, but the one, the two that they have, they're going to pay twenty, forty-three, plus ten thirty-five.
So right now, so doesn't it have to two cans? So whatever those two cans are, um, they're paying that monthly price. Um, like I said, I can't differentiate, but I look at it and see, uh, one's for recycling, and one's for trash, or, as your point stated, you know, or two for trash, I'd have to go back and look at that. But at this time, they have two cans, and that's the monthly fee.
So Clark, you're saying that they can have two garbage cans and send which you want to recycle, basically?
That's what I'm saying, yes.
That's what I thought.
The recycling is going to be separated, it's not the same, not the same product, right?
Definitely, yeah. This is.
The same day.
No big changes at this time, right?
That's great. Say what it is.
The recycling can is going to be visually different from the trash can?
Should have a blue lid, yes.
I have a recycling, well, here, I have one of your original recycling cans, that have a blue lid, has a green lid.
Is that a little narrow, a little narrow to anyone?
Mine, mine is yellow.
Yours is yellow?
My recycled one is yellow, yes, sir.
Okay. I think there's going to be a, there'll be some public relations needed on this, if people understand exactly what it is that we're having.
Yes, sir, we serve the world.
Mr. Waste Management.
Thank you, I like that, it makes three things. Uh, I talked to Matthew about this today. Uh, we, I mean, you can leave it up to, uh, Waste Management to do the citizen notification, but I don't want to get those phone calls from those ones that have the in-ground cans. So I want to make sure that this, uh, this notification, everybody, is done far in advance, and not the week before, or the week after, or the month after, or when they get the bill, so.
Will they, will they call me or not? Call me.
Okay, I, I think you, you, you have, you're going to create a risk, Matthew, to leave it up solely to somebody else to do one notification, and expect everybody to see it. Because there's going to be somebody not going to see it for many of the stuff, so I think you need to kind of go above and beyond the notification for this. They're, they're, they're going to be upset. Um, the, do we have a city line still? Do we not publish and mail a city line anywhere? We, we stopped doing hard copies? Okay. Uh, maybe you got to put something on the front page of the website, and maybe some, some way also, so you can always, at least you can point them to that and say, hey.
We, we know who the in-ground people are, because we've done surveys, we're just going to notify them.
And I said we're not, they're.
Well, we are, I'm just saying we are going to notify them. That's why I just said, maybe the goal would be.
We are going to notify them. They're going to notify in, or?
They're going to do everybody.
Okay.
We're going to do the in-ground people, because those are the ones that are going to be affected by the things.
Exactly, okay, good, I'll have to call a mayor.
I'll sit there.
Uh, my, my can, and I know some of my neighbors' cans have been slammed on the ground so many times, the wheels have fallen off. I wired mine back on. Uh, my can is split, uh, about a foot down one side. What do you, what do you do about that?
Certainly, we would replace any cans, um, you know, that you call in or those come by.
Okay.
And that's, that's no charge at all, I mean, there's, I swear, there's certainly wear and tear, you know, on a can, so whether it's, it's something that our drivers did, or it was on the heat, you know, eventually rips it down, so.
Okay. Uh, my, my last comment is, and I mentioned to Matthew also, I, I don't like the language in the contract. Uh, I agree with a hundred percent CPI increase, I don't have a problem with that. Uh, I mean, the world kind of moves in that way. Uh, CPI increase would normally cover things like fuel increases, materials increases, cost of vehicle increases, all that kind of stuff. This contract provides for CPI increase, and on top of that, you can ask, you can get increases for fuel, increases for cost of equipment being more, increases for cost of labor, increases of cost of everything else. I think the way the contract is written, you're double dipping, and I don't think that it's right or fair.
Well, we certainly appreciate those comments, Vice Mayor. I believe the language is extraordinary circumstances, as you all know, I've come back, um, on in the past, and has that, and it's certainly, uh, you know, the presentation, and certainly the council's guidance to approve or disapprove, uh, you know, those, those extraordinary, uh, changes. The, uh, the one thing I would add is, uh, the CPI indexes is that eight-four and a half percent, uh, here to date, and we did switch the CPI of the water, sewer, trash, which is more reflective of our internal costs, or industry costs, uh, which is probably two to three percent lower than the rest of the indices at this time, which, as the city manager always mentioned, was running seventy percent. So, uh, that was, uh, you know, a point that we certainly wanted to, to discuss, is, you know, a hundred percent CPI over the past. We did not get that, and just cumulative of your, your reasons, I'd come back and request those additional stents that I had. Some were approved, some were, I can just.
I disagree with what you said. Uh, I'm looking at the extraordinary adjustments paragraph here. And the only thing in that paragraph that mentions extraordinary adjustments is the heading on that paragraph, along with something probably in the bottom of this contract, it said headings mean nothing.
Mr. Vice Mayor, what page are you going with the contract on?
I'm on page one five two. And this says, "In addition to adjustments provided above, i.e. in addition to CPI increases, the rates shall, upon request of licensee, be further adjusted to fully capture increased expenses and lost revenue associated with the following." And you go down through here, it says, "Changes in cost of labor, changes in cost of fuel, changes in, uh, cost of equipment." So that's what the CPI is all about. So if you're going to do a CPI increase, and you're going to get an increase for all, then you're double dipping. And with that language, I will not vote for this contract.
I appreciate those comments, Vice Mayor. The next page over, once again, um, I don't see this double digits, I just see this, uh, you know, we can certainly look at, uh, you know, pre-COVID and post-COVID, and, uh, you know, the different changes that we experienced in our industry, which we found that some of them were beyond circumstances or reasonable causes we had, so. Uh, once again, that, uh, the city may request those documentation, and I'd bring it before you on annual basis, and council can decide on that.
Let me ask you a different way. This says that you're entitled to increases in tipping fees, increases in fuel, increases in truck expenses, and increases in labor, on top of CPI. So what the heck does a CPI increase cover?
So CPI increases covers, uh, you know, in our industry, we have water, sewer, and trash, as we see those on annual budget. Uh, on an annual basis, that would cover that to a certain extent. Remember, the CPI is lagging, so it's looking at the previous twelve months. Uh, for example, with labor, we've seen labor increase, you know, double digits, uh, you know, fuel, uh, not fuel, but let's say parts for trucks, come to mine, uh, liverpits, and so forth, as, as you may have seen as well, have increased, uh, you know, in double digits. So that, that doesn't cover, you know, four percent doesn't cover that, and it's in totality.
The CPI's been, uh, I think about eight percent the last twelve months, but you're telling me that CPI doesn't, doesn't cover your increased labor percentage?
Not at all, not at all. Our CPI has been for four and a half percent. So as you just mentioned, you know, there's all ranging in delta there, between forty percent. Uh, that's not covering our costs.
I'd, I'd like to see the CPI chart on this, because I don't believe that. Except the rest of council, I'm, I'm voting against this kind of. Except the rest of council, I'm, I'm totally against this contract actually, that language in it. I have no problem, if our contract had a eighty-five percent of CPI, I have no problem giving them a hundred percent of CPI, that is fair. But I don't, I have a problem giving them a hundred percent of CPI and any increase in fuel. I mean, where's our main expense? Fuel, labor, trucks, double increase. They're asking for CPI and any increase in any of those things. Well, CPI covers those things.
Whether, uh, person, the, like, the double fees, your own fees, you go to your own landfill.
So we go to a transportation white tank and a third party transportation, how many takes it from there to our landfill?
To your land.
Yeah, so the, for example, the transportation cost that we incurred from NBI, Mr. Bill, to, to handle that, it's roughly three million dollar increase they're requesting for this past year. So in that example, you know, we per those costs.
So is that three million dollar increase, is that built into what we have here or is that expected to become in the future?
No, that's not built in here, it's not expected. We just, you know, for, we've been long-term partners with the state of the market. You know, we look at our operation efficiencies and try to build it out, so it's covered with all our customers at this time.
I guess I'm, I'm, I'm not clear on what, what is, what you're gonna use extraordinary adjustments for, because we've not had this in the past. We have had situations where you come, because you didn't get a full CPI, you came and said, we need, we need to have an additional change, or there was a change, I think, in recycling because of the changes in the recycling market. But I don't recall you coming and saying, well, my cost of transport from the transfer station to my own landfill, I mean, it's like you're having a different, that cost happened, so I need an additional, additional change.
You know, I guess we look at, Mr. Mayor, you know, no crystal ball, we can't predict what's gonna happen three to five years down the road, there are significant changes, whether it's, you know, government policies through, you know, labor issues and so forth, that we just had the opportunity to come before council and make that request, it's really, we transparent with it all as well to. We're not looking for additional monies and that so forth, but we certainly wanna stay whole, provide the best services to the city as possible.
Yeah, but it's not very clear from, it's, it's obvious the CPI goes up five percent, then our fee, you know, the fee that we pay goes up five percent. But how, how are you gonna take a change, for example, you got a weekly retail, I know with diesel price change. Well, none of your trucks use diesel, right? So how are you gonna translate a change in diesel prices to something that we should be, you know, should be something based on our monthly fee? How does, how does that work for me?
None of our trucks, you know, within the city, our C and G, however, to point, you know, the transfer station, backlog numbers or.
No, no, practice time, so diesel prices go up five percent. What does that mean to the average person in the middle market?
What does that mean?
Yeah, so how much more, how much more of an increase are you gonna ask for? Because diesel prices went up five percent.
Probably zero, because they're built into our C and G now, they go up twenty, thirty percent.
It says that, that you will, it says in addition, it will be further adjusted to fully capture increases in diesel prices. What, what does that mean? Well, your trucks don't use diesel, so I'm saying, it makes no sense that we have, we're gonna even talk about an increase in diesel prices having some impact on our purposes. But it says they're gonna be fully adjusted and fully captured. So what is the, what's the relationship between diesel prices that we have to capture in our rates?
I would agree that's, it's about, well, you wouldn't, that's why I shouldn't, probably shouldn't be in there. As our trucks run on commercial natural gas.
This might be something you see go back and you spend all the time with them. Because the trouble is, it doesn't, it doesn't, there's no way to relate what these changes might be. Does it change their request?
So, I really question that one, is there?
Well, it says it shall be fully captured. So the argument will be, what does that mean? What does a capture mean? If they have no diesel in their trucks and diesel price goes up, we don't have to adjust anything, capture that, right? See, the word is, the problem is, is where capture is not defined, is that how, how are we gonna translate that to our, to our residents?
But, Mr. Mayor, you're saying, so let's use something besides diesel, it's unlike you, if there's no diesel being used, we certainly shouldn't get charged for it. But let's say the government fees went up. So what you're asking for is if there was a government fee increase of a dollar, how does that relate to our citizens' current, correct?
Why, and what fees are those? Because they have their own landfill. So is there some fee that you're paying your landfill to use your own landfill? I don't think so.
I, I'm just using that as an example.
Well, again, these, a lot of these things that are listed here probably don't apply to us at all. And so then the argument, if they come, if you ever come back and you're, it hurts gonna be, will you just show me how that impacts the cost of doing the business you're doing for my resident? If you wanna capture something, how do you, how do you capture it? I mean, it's, because most of these things, they're, you know, they're not gonna be have, they're not gonna have any, any impact on a resi, the business they do for the residents of the middle market.
Mr. Mayor, you want me to fast?
Oh, please.
Clark, how do you guys do this in the current contract? I know that your CPI was in a current contract, but how do you handle this? Like, I know extraordinary increases in the current contract have to come to council for approval, but as far as how it relates to a citizen's monthly bill, how do you guys do that under the contract you're under today? How do you do that today?
I think that's the problem, if we would say, we're gonna bring these extraordinary adjustments to council for your review, then, then we can take a look at a specific thing that may happen in the future. The problem is, it doesn't say that, it says that we will change it to capture. So what does that capture, what does that mean? Has to, has to be defined, or we need to have the ability to say no. We don't think this applies to our residents.
We can't say no when we, this is written.
Well, I understand.
Clark, you might be able to answer this. Would Waste Man, would Waste Management be agreeable to that addition to the extraordinary fee section? That it would be required council approval for extraordinary fees?
Yes, yes, Senator, and, you know, and correctly, Mayor Vice Mayor, if I'm reading it wrong, but the next page, next paragraph, I assumed that it was outlined, that, that, you know, if there was a request made, we would write before council the documentation that council would request, and then it would be up to council to decide on that.
And I think if long as it's a request and not, and not simply a change by right, then it's fine, because that's what's been in the past.
You know, in, in my twenty years of experience, Mr. Mayor, you've always brought those requests to you. If there's some word or wording in there, you know, attorney, if you wanna change or something, we're transparent, we can do that if that would support our council, that or, that or decision.
I think it's the wording, it's the wording, this starts out and says, "upon written request," which is fine. It's, it's say, "upon written request shall be further, further adjusted." And it's, it's, it will be further adjusted upon approval of council. I think that's the concept, I don't, I think that's the way we've done this in the past.
What's, what's, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, can you tell me, I want to, what page is this in your document back at last?
One fifty-two.
One fifty-two, will you pull it up on the screen? One fifty-three, I wanna see something. Uh, Clark, I think what we're talking about is that, unlike you, I think if the contract says the city council has to approve extraordinary fee increase, okay. I don't think it does either. It says, it talks about wrestling with the documents, but it says the city shall approve all properly calculated rate adjustments. So I don't think it gives us a choice to deny it. I think as long as the math holds water, I don't think it gives us a choice. So Clark, if, if that's the case, again, would Waste Management be, would be amenable to that change? To make extraordinary rate increases subject to council approval? Because I don't think it, right now, I don't think it is, and our attorney doesn't think it is either. You might, you might be able to answer that question, I understand that, of course. But would Waste Management be open to that change, the extraordinary rate increases, would be open to, would be subject to council approval?
Most certainly, and if you could tell me or show me, I've just got the contract. From, on page seven, or twenty-six, if I was referencing, you know, the section.
Let us get big enough to work in the.
Five, oh, seven.
Scroll, scroll down, please.
There's extraordinary adjustments and then this.
Hold on, where is it?
This is what I was.
It's right above last, can you roll it a little bit more?
So it's, it's actually, it was, it was there, it's the top paragraph, it's sort of.
Just above number seven, Clark. See right there, and that's, not the paragraph above seven, but the one above that, that left, there we go. See that, that last sentence? "The city shall approve all properly calculated rate increases," so and so forth. See, I'm not an attorney, but to me, that reads as that we'd have to approve it. Or that we wouldn't have to, you just get it as long as the math holds water. But again, would Waste Management be so, be okay with us admitting that to say that extraordinary increases must be approved by city council?
And yes, yeah, and that really was referencing the CPI that, you know, I sent you all, you all look at and prove that percentages are correct and give me the thumbs up. So the extraordinary, that would have to go front council for approval.
Mr. Mayor, was that, was that aggressive, does it definitely add to that worries?
It's not aggressive for me, because again, this practice has been consistent, right? This language is, it was just a bit trouble.
I'd like to see it right, I don't wanna do it, trying to be modified here. Don't worry.
Yeah, no, we'll turn it around.
Certainly.
I just wanna make sure we're talking about the same thing.
Yeah, and I, and I, I still, you know, what, what that does is if they come back and try to double dip by trying to get a CPI and a fuel increase, when fuel increase is already built into the CPI, council has the ability to say no, they don't get to double dip.
Correct.
That's what I would like to see before I go. I mean, the rest of this contract, there is some crap in here that is extraordinary terrible, terrible. You know, I, I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty damn close to a contract invasion, but those, that's the main point to me, is how the fees would be calculated.
We could certainly add wording here to address this. That work for you, Clark?
That is, and if, if either there's one or two that's troublesome to the, to the city, you can certainly scratch those out. So if there's a, you know, recent fuel fuse or whatever, you know, down through there, it doesn't, it's not applicable to the city, just take it out, you know, reach out and.
I'd like the city attorney to take a look at this contract closely and make sure that it's fair on both sides.
Thank you for the discussion.
Okay, so from a timing standpoint, we're gonna need to get this back, probably before the next meeting. Just to have, because I have other contract expired in June, two thirty.
Can we motion tonight to extend that for a month or two, if we need to?
Yeah, I, that would make sense. We, do we, that we could, we will, we will offer you, that we'll extend our current contract for up to sixty days to give us time to get this language agreed upon.
I'll take that back and review that and talk to leadership about it, so we decide.
Okay.
So did he just reject the sixty days?
He said he hasn't got.
I'll take that back if I agree or not.
Okay, so what I need is a motion to table this and have the city attorney review the language, but specifically the language about extraordinary adjustments. Make sure that any extraordinary adjustment will come back and have to be approved by the council.
I would make that motion, but also instruct the city attorney to look at the contract from a standpoint of double dipping for cost increases.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, messenger seat, will you go over there? Okay.
Insert a second, hold on.
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion? All is clear, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, so that will, we'll come back and revisit this. Next item, okay, we can do here all night.
Okay, I'm quick.
I don't think so. Next item is more difficult. The next item is the GMP five cost.
Oh, yes. I jumped ahead to the lawyer.
I don't think that, maybe it goes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Tonight, we wanna talk about moving forward with the next phase of construction of the Antifa project square, also known as GMP five. And as you know, we are very well along with the previous four GMPs, so we're ready to move ahead to this one. Aiken Governor has worked hard and I have worked with them on the scope of work, and I'd like to kinda look through that with you right now, and then answer any other questions. So the original accomplish of GMP five is a couple of things. One is that we need to complete the drainage system so that it can, you know, we have storms in summer. We don't end up with a muddy mess on those streets that we've already built. And to use the newly built streets under GMP five to use the newly built streets to collect drainage from the ones that are already existing and bring them down into the underground retention and system like that. So one of the main things is to complete the drainage system for the project.
Mayor, do, do we not agree that we need to get this done? What we do not agree on is how we're going to fund it as a backup if we had to, we have the cash. So if we just approve this tonight without knowing how we're gonna fund it?
If we approve it, I mean, that's what I was just looking at. We had a projected, we have a projected reserve balance, un, un, unassigned fund balance that we could use to spend on this at the end of next year, assuming a mild, only a mild recession, about seventeen million dollars. This is nine, is nine point two million. So if we approve this tonight without a way for it, that's other than using our cash, we would still have a reserve to do that.
Plus, we have our five main incentives that we like to keep.
So, yeah, it's a little more like to keep, yes. We could pay for this out of our cash without, without approving law, just.
So, so I guess the question is, do we need to go through all of this since we know we probably need to do it?
We don't need to, it's only if you feel comfortable, when council feels comfortable, not knowing exactly what's in there. I can tell you that, that we spent a lot of time, I spent time with Woody, I spent time with Matthew, we looked at cutting GMP five down to just the bare minimum, that we would need to honor our contract with my heard. And the problem with doing it that way is you end up with a mess in terms of what you're trying to sell. And, you know, it's just, it's not, it's not a good product. And I can throw away money, because you do things, there's some temporary things you have to do that they will, we pay for them now, then go back and work with mountain collectors.
I agree with your analysis on that, that's why I kinda was thinking in my mind, this is something we have to do. But then the question pops up is, you know, are we cutting this project off? It needs, or are we?
We're not, we need to do GMP six also.
Yes.
We need to do both.
Yes.
We need to do this one for sure.
This one we can do without the bond, it hurts.
We could.
Six, we have to do with the bond, some kind of.
You should have, you're gonna have to do something.
Yeah. So, I mean, do we need to spend ten, fifteen, twenty minutes going through all of these things that we're looking at? Or do, your recommendation is to do it, isn't it?
I would say yes, do it, but my recommendation also is to use, you know, to use a lot of financial items. I think it's a safer process. And that's, we can make that decision later, if everyone's comfortable, I can.
I'm uncomfortable with this, with this GMP five.
Any input from anybody else?
I'm comfortable with it.
Ask for it, okay?
Kelsey, you have anything to say?
Oh, oh, just listening.
All righty. So it's up to the council, do you want to, or we go through this presentation and we, before we get an understanding of what that colored picture means, or we can say, oh, let's go through it, do GMP five and then, you know, understand that we gotta figure this bond issue out.
And that's, and we need to figure it out quickly. So we try to keep the interest rate issues as, you know, as close to where they are at the end. So close to where they may be in another six months.
Instead, until next, but I can bond information to us.
They have that, yeah. Yeah, we can understand. So what's, what's the pledge, your counsel?
I approve GMP five.
Second. All right. For the discussion.
Sorry, I didn't work the talk.
For the discussion. All those in favor of approving GMP five, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good job, Woody.
All those in favor of having a vote?
Thank you. Raise your hand if you just covered it up.
Thank you.
All right. We're gonna take you as a yes, counsel, all right.
He's like, so he. I think he's blinking, but he's not clutching. Doc, did you, roll back to you, Harris.
I think he's.
I think he's watching the news.
All right, I, we're gonna go on to the key adoption ordinance, uh, for permitted locations of wireless services. Mr. Pro.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, council, good evening. This is the second reading of a zoning text amendment that we brought forward to you last month. Just briefly, because you heard this from me last month. At the end of last year, Daniel there identified that the app in our zoning code relative to where wireless communication facilities or WCFs can locate. It's governed in our zoning code under section thirty-six, and this would be a texted limit to that particular section of the zoning code. Right now, where we allow the wireless communication facilities, the molecules, the concealed, uh, disguised wireless facilities are few zoning districts, resort, neighborhood commercial, nearly commercial, and regional commercial. This request would add the general industrial zoning district as a location where the WCFs could, could locate. We brought this forward to planning commission in November. They told the CAF, go ahead and proceed, so uh, basically, the, the text amendment is fairly simple. It's really just adding the ordinance, let's see, the package, adding the general industrial zoning district as a, um, potential category for wireless services.
Mr. Mayor?
No.
If I had questions on this last time, they were answered by the, the document, twenty-three dash two six seven. No, without this question, I think that we already have this kind of ordinance in effect. What we've done with the, um, five G rules or something.
Fifty percent rules.
Yeah, and, uh, it was answered that that was a different section in the code, and this was doing something else. So answer my questions. I, I'm fine with it. I moved with proof of orders.
Second.
All right, any further discussion on adopting ordinance point three dash two six seven? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, good job with your presentation.
I'm gonna pick you guys off with the D's, but we're gonna be here all night anyways.
All right, next item is I have the intervention ordinance twenty-three dash two sixty-eight.
Motion, motion introduced.
Is there a second?
Aye.
Any discussion on this, on the motion introduced?
New ordinance. And he'll come back to us again next time.
It's only, it's only introduced. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so the motion is, is passed and the ordinance is introduced. Next item is F, IMF, interruption of city ordinance point three dash two sixty-nine, short-term vacation levels.
This is long overdue. I'm looking to approve.
Is it?
That thank the, uh,
Any discussion?
For three, five, three versions, somebody else. Mission stuff.
Any, uh, discussion on short-term mental changes? All those in favor, if you're saying this ordinance, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The motion passes and the ordinance is introduced. Next is introduction, introduction of ordinance twenty-three dash two seventy, structured sober living homes.
If you wait long enough.
Say, I'll, I'll speak with you, but, um, this was pretty solid, Mayor, counsel. What this does currently, violations of the sober living ordinance is a civil offense. This would make it where it would be a criminal offense, not a civil offense.
Motion introduced.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Ordinance is introduced. Next item, introduction of ordinance twenty-three dash two seventy-one, a trucking trailer park.
Mayor, council, what this ordinance says, we, we copied this one by the local party. We're starting to issue, we're seeing Trump's parking in cities places that they shouldn't be. So what this would do is, this would make it so they couldn't do that. Where they can only be parked for things like loading and unloading, for example, on federal over in the fries. I know a couple of house, we're really concerned about this. And it also makes it where there's only so they can be such as truck stops. Obviously, we don't have any truck stops on the street park. But it also makes it so they can idle. So one thing I did ask, I can certainly, this was, this was a kind of obvious duty for server. Was, for example, if someone had a, if someone had a RV, if they wanted to go and fry them by virtue, could they do that with their, with their truck and RV outside fries? And I actually asked, and they'll chief of state, they have one too. And he said, yes, so they, they do allow RVs in Abbotell. If you want to go to Walmart, park for RV, park for lunch, you can, they do allow that. And how they do that basically is that there's a word in this ordinance that allows for loading and unloading. And of course, if you're at Walmart shopping or fries, um, you're, you're looking for you.
Mark, can you show me the.
That depends.
Show me the loading and unloading label.
I got you.
This one.
Mark, you know, you should be okay there.
I just had a question there.
Uh, one second, sir.
See, it does imply a traffic fiction motionless emergency.
I would say this was, is there a twelve-four-nine B about halfway down the paragraph? Um, I don't have a visual, sorry. I have, I have.
I don't work out.
Twelve-four-nine meters. It's in the paragraph, it starts the restriction set for. So who knows?
Okay, I got it.
About halfway down? For, for, for the purpose of loading or unloading?
Public utility vehicles performing operations through utility. Moving vans for the purpose of loading and unloading, drive a moving van. Uh, for a period not to exceed seventy-two hours.
So I would say loading or unloading would apply on that. That means that I'm referring that to a procedure.
My, my interpretation is the way this is written, if I park my RV, RV in front of fries, or I go to get fuel fries, or the diesel truck lines up behind fries, unloading groceries, it's in violation.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, um, I believe, uh, as, as the city manager mentioned, I believe that language is, is aimed at what you're describing. Uh, people who are coming to the grocery store, but I think it's, it, it's a long sentence. And I do think it gets a little bit ugly. It's a very long list. I think there's some real easy tweaks we could make. And we could real easily adjust it.
Yeah, fix, fix the punctuation or whatever. It isn't there to make it so that I can legally go by yes. Yes, sir. Thank you.
I think we can do that.
It's a first read. We could certainly admit it when the person says.
Yes.
All right, so we get this introduced and then you can figure out the language on that, all right?
Yeah.
Is there a motion?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this, our ordinance twenty-three dash two seventy-one, the intersection?
Discussion.
Okay.
Matthew, you're gonna have this conversation in there also, and maybe we need to rethink this a little bit, but I think all of our problem has been with these trucks that are parking on public roads and right of ways and stuff. I'm not aware of any problem with trucks parking in private business parking lots. And if that's the case, we don't have a problem. I'm not sure why we're making it illegal to park in private parking lots. If they go to fries, let fries run around. If fries doesn't like it there. Should we be on private property enforcing this? And it gets away from my problems with the RVs, you know, the fueling, that kind of stuff, so.
Uh, no, I certainly understand the point, and I see what you're saying as far as private property. But I'm gonna play the other side of the coin. What if we had a shopping center where they were perfectly okay with that? Let's try to park in there overnight for a lot.
We change it.
Just asking.
Matthew, I think this applies to buying the point.
It does.
So, what was the question?
He was asking if this applied to mine for a point, and it does.
Yes. Yeah. And if mine, if I get a parking problem there off of the public right of ways? They're not, they're parking on the public right of ways, it's a problem, but are they parking in the dirt also?
The roads are not public right of way. They're private, so that's what this applies.
They are, you're right. They are private parking.
But we do have a letter from our.
There's a letter, there's a letter saying there's one on there.
Isn't that great? He pulls up the issue there.
I haven't seen the letter. I think that he.
Right, he's telling you.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the implication of the letter is kind of forceful.
Yeah.
We certainly drafted a very good.
Yeah, if you can get that language tweaked, I mean, this paragraph straightened out so that it's not a wrong old sentence, it doesn't, doesn't seem to. It isn't very clear. And we've recently had some problems with some ordinances that are not very clear. So, we don't want this one to be one of them.
Agreed, yeah. All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of introducing those, let's say, what, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, ordinance is introduced. Next item is ratification of contract that the city manager has already started with Stella Moore. This is within the city manager's authority, but we won't bring it to us for ratification. Any questions?
Mayor, you approve of this?
I do.
Motion to approve this, ratify, ratify this contract?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. This next one, the tax name seven of. We're not in a position to accept this seven, so I'm not sure this is something that needs to be on this council agenda.
Why don't we just take that, serve it in further documentation?
So we're gonna do that.
As I've mentioned, also figure out which attorney we're gonna use and whether attorney's on contingency or whether he's hourly and.
Okay, the last item is ratification of the Latin insurance costs for Little Rock Square construction approval of future expenditures. Mr. Scott.
It's almost time we got to this one, it's still down the hall.
Nope, you're on the.
So anyway, over the last three years or so, we've spent about two and a half million dollars on engineering and design costs for all the Little Rock Square improvements and all the construction plans and drawings and everything. Um, and we've been charging it against the, uh, capital items for Little Rock Square each year. But we've never brought, uh, discrete pieces of engineering or design costs to the council for approval. Primarily because we're a C Mar project. You start construction while you're still designing the project, so it's very difficult to look them up into discrete units and bring them forward for approval, so. Um, anyway, uh, what we're doing tonight is asking the council to, uh, ratify the two million four hundred ninety-eight thousand, uh, in current expenditures through March of this year. And then, since all of the design is basically done, we're just, uh, you know, our consultants are just involved in, uh, progress meetings and a bunch of things related to construction and the improvements. Those costs will start dropping off incrementally over the next twelve months or so. Um, at, at the end of the day, I think we're gonna be somewhere around three point one million dollars, which is a little under eight percent of the total forty million dollars of interest worth of cost. Which I think is right in there in terms of the, you know, traditional ratios of engineering design costs to total. So staff recommends, um, council route time of previous design and engineering expenses and the future expenses to the, uh, construction of the project.
Questions, Mr. Council?
Are the questions are not safe? Why do you destroy this, Mayor? Well, yeah, my project, I'm doing, my design bees are between two and two and a half percent, design, air, architect, engineering. Why are ours always? You're saying eight percent is reasonable, ten percent is normal. Why are ours four times higher?
Um, I don't know what you're designing or building, but public works facility, you know, public work streets, water sewer, um, you know, all the, uh, utility systems, landscaping, architecture, uh, street lighting, you know, all of that is considered public works, and it typically falls in about eight to ten percent.
Any further questions? Is there a motion to ratify the expenditure of designing the term cost for Little Rock Square construction?
Don't leave me.
So. All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Yeah, just, the motion, the motion that's been made and seconded is to ratify what we've already spent. Uh, but it's not to approve a blank check for what we're gonna spend in the future. Those, the, the, these kind of costs should come to the council and be discussed. At some point, while we're doing what we're doing, as opposed to waiting, like, we've spent too much dollars.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, we can certainly do that on a monthly basis if that's true.
Yeah, that's what I'm just saying, the six, what we've already spent, I'm willing to support ratifying it, because that's what we, we have agreed as a city to do that, even though we agreed as a city not through the council, which is not the procedure. Now, I wanna say it's okay. So I gotta say it mostly to the city manager, since you're the director of ministry to be here and say, okay, for you. But it's not okay. And we should have known as a city, not, not you, but you and Peggy should know that we're spending money that hasn't been lowered on and ratified and hasn't been approved by the council. And we can't do that.
Yes.
You know, whether it's this project or any other one. So I'm willing to support the idea that we'll approve this two million four hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred fifty-five dollars and ninety-two cents. We'll, we'll ratify that. But in the future, before you spend money like this, you gotta come to the council.
Agreed, sir.
Is that the motion?
The motion is to ratify two million four hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred fifty-five dollars, ninety-two cents, which is what's already been spent. Those, those are checks that would be written or we're really.
How, where you, if you stop working on this right now, how would that occur?
You need, you need to bring it back to the council, what are you doing, and give, we can, we can address it. We can address it if we know what it is, other than know. So it can't just be any another six hundred thousand dollars for engineering. You know what it is you're gonna do and why it's okay, and why it's reasonable. Another normal loop should go through to get six hundred thousand dollars. So if you want to expand the motion to approve in the future, it's fine. I don't, I don't want to see this, I don't want to see it come to the council. Before, we know this ongoing, you know, would be the best practice would be before we go into these, if we're gonna start engineering contract with a certain company, we approve the contract and we approve a process to approve expenditures on that company right from the court. And we didn't, I probably didn't do that.
So. I had some proposals, it's maybe some bit, is there something?
All right, I mean, there should be a process. So we didn't take a look at, we didn't take a look at that whole, with that whole.
So we need to take a look at, we need to take a look at that whole, that whole situation and make sure that we need to bring back, we're gonna spend the six on council, bring it back and do it in a way that we can, we can understand what we're approving, and the council has never not approved it. But you can't, can't assume that it's just gonna happen, it needs to cover, as we discussed publicly, but our minutes, I mean, there's a whole process that needs to be approved of this kind of expenditure.
Tell me, is it possible city managers?
Only a little bit. We do it every week, but for you.
Mr. Mayor, just a, just a point of order, now that you've hopefully elaborated on that motion, it might be better for the record if we could re-move and re-second. Just because you weren't.
What I ask for somebody to move to ratify the design and interim cost, blah blah blah, without the specific amount. But not to approve future expenditures, which is the way this, this council communication is presented. We can, we can do it differently.
No, Mr. Mayor, I have no objection to your motion, just if we could get for the record confirmation that the mover and the seconder, that that's what they moved.
For the record, for the record, the motion is to ratify the design interim cost for the Short Square infrastructure in the amount of two million four hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred fifty-five dollars and ninety-two cents through March twenty-twenty-three. You made the motion, you agree with that.
I do.
You seconded, you agree. So we have that in our record, yes, everybody's happy. So is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Alright, so we ratified the required expenditure now between, you know, city manager and page, and you can figure out how to bring the next tranche to us in a way that we can, we can approve it.
Okay, we'll do.
Alright, thank you. Okay, unfortunately, we're not done. So, is the motion going to executive session under items eleven, E, and C, and D? All we have, all we have is the motion to do it also, eleven, A, B, C, and D.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, or any opposed? Alright, we're in executive session.